Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Murawski?
Present.
Mr. Timmons?
Present.
President Jones?
Here.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on January 31st and the business meeting on January 31st. Motion.
The sum of...
Second.
Second. Say aye?
Aye.
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 The opposed? Motion carries minutes are approved. Mrs. Bates, before we get started, I'm going to ask, as you give your reports, if you could be as brief as possible, because as you can tell, we have a huge public waiting, so please be brief. Mrs. Bates, as Chair of the Policy Committee, please present your January 18 report.
Yes, one note. A priority of the committee members is to put our policies back on a three-year rotation, so we do not have a work plan to present for approval tonight. That will be developed. Another item I would like to point out is that the administration currently is going through all of our policies through the Eyes of Equity and making the recommendations for revision based on that. And as long as we have an audience, I'd like to point out, the city is doing this as well, and they hired a consultant, but we have people within our staff who are able to do that at a much reduced price to our taxpayers. And we will be presenting that work as the policies come up for revision.
Thank you. Mrs. Bolton, as Chair of the Student Achievement Committee, would you please give your January 18 report?
Yes, thank you very much. As quickly as we can, we will be finishing up the work plan this week and have it ready for adoption a little bit later, perhaps this month. We're also meeting regarding the superintendent's evaluation, so that we can meet that deadline for the whole board to take action before March 1st. I would also just like to suggest a big emphasis on the later starts regarding high schools is continuing to be planned, not the later starts, but at least a community dialogue about whether or not that's a good idea, as well as tremendous efforts being done in the district regarding career paths and career curriculum, career-based learning. So we're very excited about that. The other thing, as I would have one correction and would like it to be approved with one correction, we adjourned at 4:00 p.m., not 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one other correction, just for the record, on page four, at the bottom of Other Business, and it said that I informed the group about Gamble-Montessori's community conversations on later start times. Those community conversations were actually in a race.
Race, okay. And this is for student achievement. I forgot to ask if there were any questions about policy. Is this student achievement?
Yeah, student achievement.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Questions or comments about student achievement minutes? Mr. Messer, as Chair of the Finance Committee, would you please give your report on the January 18 meeting?
Yes. January 18, we had our forming meeting of the Finance Committee, along with Vice President Copeland-Dansby and Ms. Bates. As it was a forming committee, we evaluated the work plan and will be proposing any changes or additions to that at the upcoming meeting, which is later this week. We also began having conversations on the subject of school funding and specifically talking with our lobbyists, who are helping us understand some of the House bills and how that affects property values and property taxes and how that will ultimately affect the funding of our schools here in Cincinnati. And then we dug into a few areas that we wanted to make sure that we're not just clear with the board, but that we were being also transparent with our community in how we are classified by the state from a district classification, also looking at the tax abatement process and property values and what discussions and decisions would be forthcoming that would affect CPS in the coming year or two, and then also looking at the costs per student and evaluating that between public schools and charter schools. So we submit our report and we hope to encourage as many people as possible to our next Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? We need a voice vote to accept the minutes as written. Please, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from FC Cincinnati's President and General Manager, Mr. Jeff Birding. In follow-up to a written request, the Board invited Mr. Birding to present information to the Board and the public about FCC's proposed interest in pursuing a partnership with the district. As we've heard in news reports and public meetings, including the last public meeting of this Board, many people are wondering whether FCC is specifically looking at property that is currently home to our historic Stargill Stadium. The Board has asked Mr. Birding to provide specific information regarding FCC's interest. While we understand that FCC's proposed plans are not completely finalized, we hope this presentation is as open and detailed as possible regarding this expressed interest. Our intention this evening is to get information out to the public about a potential development and for the Board to have as much information as needed for any future decisions we might make on this matter. This is a presentation for us to gain information about a proposed development. No decision will be made tonight. The Board will be listening and we will have an opportunity to pose questions and make comments at the end of the presentation. For those in our audience tonight who may not typically attend our Board of Education meetings, and the hearing of the public will occur after our two presentations, we have a protocol wherein when our guest speakers make their presentation, after the presentation, the Board will have questions of the presenter. We are committed to doing this in an open and transparent manner. Our public will be able to make comments during the hearing of the public, which follows on the agenda after the presentation. Those who intend to speak during the hearing of the public must sign in with our secretary, and I believe that that is closed at this point. And believe me, we have about 46 people who we want to hear. So tonight, we have with us Mr. Jeff Birding, President and General Manager of Football Club Cincinnati. Mr. Birding?
Thank you. Thank you to the members of the School Board, Superintendent, parents, and students. I appear tonight before you on behalf of Carl Linder III, all of our owners, our staff players, and all of our supporters who have built this brilliant club in such a short period of time, many of whom are here this evening. We created FC Cincinnati three years ago because we acknowledged that soccer was the world's biggest sport, and as a major league community, we wanted to ensure that Cincinnati got in on the action. It truly is a civic enterprise. When we created FC Cincinnati, we were very clear about our vision for what the club would be. We would be a winning team, we would be a family-friendly club, and we would be a franchise that was visible in the community. Since our inception just three years ago, the team has had record attendance, excitement, some big wins, and a lot of national interest, and we're ready to move up to a major league soccer level in an expansion process that was outlined in December of 16. Eight months ago, as a part of that expansion process, we publicly identified three potential neighborhoods for a new privately-funded $200 million-plus soccer stadium that we would pay for, again privately-funded stadium. Oakley, the West End, and Newport were the three neighborhoods that we discussed. The opportunity to win an MLS franchise requires a soccer-specific stadium that works best in an urban environment. Again, FC Cincinnati Stadium is going to be privately financed. When I talked about this being a civic enterprise, we're going to spend $350 million privately for a league that, on average, every team loses money. So this is truly about doing something we think great for our community. FCC has never identified any of those three neighborhoods as preferred or Plan A. I've seen media reports to that fact. I've never said that. No one associated with the team has ever said that. All three neighborhoods have strengths and bring great opportunities and some challenges. Given the enormous private investment, an FC Cincinnati stadium must be a great addition to the neighborhood. So jobs and entrepreneurial opportunities, affordable housing, retail and entertainment, community assets, all the things that make a thriving, healthy neighborhood in which a stadium where we're going to invest greatly could do well. Obviously, in the three neighborhoods, we're talking about Oakley. We're currently doing traffic and environmental studies. They're underway now. I met with the Community Council President yesterday. Upon completion, we will review the results of these studies with the city, the Community Council, residents, and businesses. We've had good conversations with the sign owner and developer about the Ovation Development in Newport, and those continue as well. But of course, tonight, we're here to talk about the West End. As you see here, our plans have some very specific requirements. The stadium would not touch the Taft High School building or the gym in any way. No housing will be taken, no residents will be displaced. A site plan involving the high school stadium, the existing location if we choose to move in this direction, the partnership we're here to discuss. If it would need to replace the existing Stargill Stadium, it would need a bigger, improved Stargill Stadium, so the current activities are not impacted. And I have Steve Langenkamp here, who's going to talk about that a bit. Steve is one of our architects with MSA, Michael Schuster and Associates. And we've committed to a neighborhood outreach that will lead to a community benefits agreement, and I testified before City Council on that last week. So here is the existing Willard-Stargill Stadium everyone's familiar with, with the school building in the front and the high school stadium, Stargill Stadium, just behind. So, again, still Stargill Stadium from inside. And from the street on Central. So what we would like to share with you tonight is the idea to do an exchange, a land exchange, to consider the possibility of could we build a bigger, improved Stargill Stadium that would be the best high school stadium in the district, maybe in the state. The idea would be to build it right out the front door of the stadium on the site that you see currently right in front, center of this map. I'm going to have Steve Langenkamp talk a little bit about the design. I want to stress, this is an initial, this is really important, this is an initial vision of what could, what would fit on this site and what could be done in partnership with CPS, but we'd also want to involve the neighborhood. We'd also want to involve, this is Nick Johnson, who is the President and CEO of the Little Senators, the neighborhood youth organization that does such great work with the kids who use Stargill, and he's going to have a few words to say as well.
Thanks, Jeff. You know, back in 2004, we actually, MSA Architects, MSA Sport, we were involved with the original renovation of Stargill Stadium. At that time, Alton Fraley was the Superintendent, and his vision for Stargill Stadium was that it would be a center of excellence, a home for six schools, and it's definitely lived up to that. What's being proposed here are great improvements. You're looking at Azure Charles and a grand entrance into the new stadium. We're improving the bleachers. The one unique thing about the home side is that there's a split-level concourse, which allows for great sightlines. That would move to this new site. Along with that, that deck is raised up, so what we're calling for is that the restrooms and locker rooms be pushed underneath the stands, almost doubling what the current locker room holds today. You would have ticketing and concessions with official locker rooms. We want to make sure we keep those folks away from the fans, so we have an area just for them. What's unique, too, about this is that we're actually calling for separate concessions for the visitors, which currently you don't have at Stargill. We are going to improve the lighting. We're going with LED sport lighting, which you don't have currently, so that's a huge improvement. It'll help with broadcasting, videoing, you name it, which it also will limit the spillage into the community. All the field events would be inside the perimeter, and then we're also calling for an improvement to the landscaping and fencing around the perimeter of the facility.
We also have built in an athletic training area to improve the care for the student athletes, additional larger press box, and we also have the idea of having a canopy to keep the people that come to the games out of the rain, or maybe out of the sun, depending on how hot it is. This would be from the home side, so you could see the student athletes would walk right out the front door, walk right into their locker, into the locker room, have team meeting rooms there underneath the grandstand, in the lockers underneath that. You can see, obviously, it retains the name. If the district wanted, we could put a statue there for Mr. Stargill, right out at the entrance on that plaza. So it would certainly maintain the legacy. You can see it's also very close to Hayes Porter, and so the students at Hayes Porter would also have an opportunity to use this. It's also a little bit closer to the School for Creative and Performing Arts that also use this. This is a little bit of a bigger view of it, for those of you who are looking to take some pictures. So you can see it is right out the front door. So if we were to proceed, we obviously need to work with CPS on finalizing all of these details that result in improved facilities for CPS. We want to improve student program, both in sports and academically. We'd love to see where students come out of Taft, and if they're going towards the FC Stadium, they could literally intern in our office. Students who want to get a career in sports, not as athletes, but as people working in the business of sports, could literally, we could have internships with the Taft students throughout the year. So we want to make sure that we have improved programs. Currently, we would have a lot of opportunities to have a Taft High School Boys and Girls Soccer Program. The field is bigger, so not only is the track Olympic-sized, but the field is actually bigger to better support soccer programs. And of course, we want to expand the student and Taft school-community partnership. As I mentioned, we are well aware that it's not just the high school that uses Stargill Stadium. The neighborhood uses Stargill Stadium. And so yesterday, I spent a couple hours with the coaches from the Little League, talking about their important role in making sure that they're a part of this as we talk about our partnership. Nick, you want to talk about that?
Greenies members of the Board, Madam Superintendent, Madam Treasurer, thank you for the opportunity to share with us tonight. My name is Nick Johnson. I'm the CEO of the West End Little Senators Youth Athletic Club Incorporated, formerly known as the West End Wildcats. We are a youth sports education enrichment organization. Our mission is to teach skills by providing mentorship, academic support, and nutrition through sports. We have over 30 years of history within our org. I played for the Little Senators back in the 80s, so I've been a part of this organization for over 30 years. We're solid in the community. We have over 220 football players, 40 cheerleaders, and we use Stargill Stadium the same as Taft. But we all need to be on board for the simple fact that this is for our kids. They want a partnership with our kids. There's no way we should turn this down. No way. Our kids are first, and if you're not for the kids, that's the only thing that's about, that's the only thing this entire process is for, the kids. Everything about FC is for the kids in this community.
I know that we're, some of us may disagree, but I'd ask that you please respect the speakers. And we have 40 people, and I'm sure you'll be able to express your opinion. Please, thank you.
I mean, if you're not for the kids, then why are you here? If they're willing to partnership with our kids, not the adults, the kids, what's the problem? Our kids are the most kids in the city that gets nothing. No one ever came down to give anything to our kids. I've been in this organization for 30 years. No one ever, no one, no one ever gave anything to our organization. If they're willing to help us in partnership with us and the community, hear them out. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
I'll just close with this. We already have a partnership with CPS, a strong one. Whether we're in the West End with our stadium, or we're in Oakley, or we're in Newport, we're going to maintain that partnership with CPS. But we got that partnership started in our first year, well before we had any opportunity to build a stadium, well before we talked about sites. This year, we have our Foot Salt Program, eight weeks of after-school programming with students at several schools here with CPS. Our entire team, every single one of our players participates, two sessions each. We're at the Academy of World Languages, Bond Hill Academy, Chiviet School, Cove Dale School, Euler, Pleasant Hill Academy, Pleasant Ridge, Montessori, and Wynton Hills Academy. And then our FC Cincinnati Club Ambassador Program, Omar Cummings, who soccer brought him here from Jamaica to Cincinnati State and then UC, he is working with CPS to do the Fizz Ed classes and as a part of the gym class curriculum. We launched that program in October with several schools opting to do initial programming after they had such good success with it. Our partnership with UC for the use of Nippert Stadium and the benefits, too, and support from the Clifton community, I would offer demonstrates that we offer a worthwhile partnership with significant positive community impact. If we're awarded an MLS franchise, FC Cincinnati will not make the stadium decision alone. This site must not only be best for FC Cincinnati, but must be a positive addition to the community, welcomed by neighbors and our elected officials. We look forward to winning news with MLS and an inclusive community conversation on stadium plans from here. Obviously, the first step is presenting to you this evening. I'm at the West End Community Council to their Board tomorrow night, and we're going to continue to look for opportunities to get together with the community and answer questions. I will share, I was in the West End probably about 10 hours this weekend, going door-to-door, meeting with stakeholders, meeting with residents, and then we also had a group, we had a group that was going door-to-door, over 800 homes, talking to residents. And Celeste, do you want to come up and give you the results? She'll give you the results of our study, our door-to-door this weekend. She'll be quick, and then I'll be done to answer questions.
So I am Celeste, and I'm from Common Strategies. We are a community engagement... So our firm does community engagement, and let's be clear, our firm is not hired to sway the community one way or the other. Our firm is simply there to engage the residents in the community, present the facts, record their responses, quantify those responses to a tangible document that can be used to really gauge community support and be used as a tool if this does move forward for a community benefits agreement. That is it. Present the facts, let the people know who makes the decisions and what FC is offering. That's simply it. Over the weekend, contrary, we did knock over 800 doors, but everyone doesn't answer the door. So we were able to survey over 162 people within two days. We used a series of questions, which the Board has the questions, and I'll simply just go over what the results were. Of 162 surveys, the first question asked was, "Have you heard about FC Soccer Stadium coming into West End?" 87% of residents knew, 13% of residents didn't. The next question is, "What concerns do you have regarding FC Soccer Development?" This was an open-ended question. The responses vary, but these were the top concerns of the responses that were recorded. Housing and gentrification, safety, Taft Stadium, long-term employment, opportunities for small business and youth. The next questions were, "If you knew the following, would you agree with the FCC commitments that FC is planning to make? Hire Western residents, bring new community assets, not demolish any homes, build a new stadium, and make..." After asking this question, it was just to gauge, would you be more open to this idea or not, if you knew the following? And the community benefits agreement would be a legal binding agreement, from our understanding, through the city. 73% of residents said yes, and 26% of the residents said no. Either way, their minds won't be changed. The next set of questions were just purely for demographics, so we understand what the community is made up of. Do you have school-aged children? 70, I mean, 56% of people did, 44% of people did not. 61% of the people we surveyed were women, and 39% were males. You can go through the ethnicities, 76% African-American, 21% Caucasian, 2% Hispanic, and 1% Asian. The next gauge is age range, so 18 to 24 was 6%, 25 to 35 was 37%, 37 to 49 was 31%, and people over 50, 26%. Just to give you just a cap of insights and things that we found when knocking on the doors individually, we are looking at a community that's just scared and tired of broken promises. And we understand that, and that's where our goal was, to just go in and understand what these residents are really thinking. Now, this is only 162 people. From the census and city data, we know there's over 5,000 residents. We continue to engage. This might change, or it might not, but we are, as a neutral party, just to go and engage and quantify and ensure that the people are getting the real facts and able to make the decision themselves.
Thank you very much for your consideration, and I'm happy, Madam Chair, to answer any questions.
Do Board members have questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Thank you for coming to present to us. It's nice to get the information directly from you versus what I've tried to piece together in the press. So, you know, I think there has been a lot of talk in social media and mentioned here tonight on this idea of a community benefits agreement, and I will say that probably we've not been so good at that here in Cincinnati, and I could think of a neighborhood very close to this one who could have used that a while back. So my question is, what does that process look like? What is a community benefits agreement specifically that makes it enforceable? Who is that agreement made with? And then how is it developed? And what types of things would be included in that?
Madam Chair, and to the Board member, Mr. Messer, I testified in front of Cincinnati City Council last week. The Finance Chair, longtime leader David Mann, brought this in. He and I had spoken, and it was his desire that we agree to commit to that. While we are privately funding the stadium, we do, as I mentioned, view this as...
And what types of things would be included in that?
Madam Chair and to the board member, Mr. Messer. I testified in front of Cincinnati City Council last week. The Finance Chair, longtime leader David Mann, brought this in. He and I had spoken, and it was his desire that we agree to commit to that. While we are privately funding the stadium, we do, as I mentioned, view this as something that's required, needs to be a good thing. And understanding the cynicism and things that happened long before FC Cincinnati was ever formed, a community benefits agreement would go a long way, and we're willing to sign one. To the specifics of your question, my understanding, and I want to be honest, limited. My understanding is that the city of Cincinnati is going to require that. There's certainly going to be some additional work with the city that's going to be required to pull this off. And so as a condition for that, we will be responsible for signing that community benefits agreement. My understanding from Councilmember Mann is that he intends to have the residents of the West End be involved in that process. And clearly, that's what we've started doing here over the last week or so. And so that they would have their concerns addressed. They would communicate. I've encouraged people to communicate their concerns to the mayor and to David Mann and councilmembers so that those could be then negotiated into a community benefits agreement. I would certainly be fine with Cincinnati Public Schools being a part of a community benefit agreement. I think we're going to also have a contract if we go down this road, a legally binding contract where we have obligations as a part of a land exchange is contemplated here. So I think CPS might have two contractual protections. One that is specific to CPS and one is a little bit more broader as it relates to the community in that community benefits agreement.
Mr. Morosky.
I'd like to echo Member Messer's comments. Thanks for coming out and giving this to us from the horse's mouth, as it were, as opposed to where we've been reading a lot of this, which is where a lot of other folks have been reading a lot of this. Regarding the community benefits agreement, I did not hear the testimony. But would I be correct in thinking that one of the issues, of course, for us, in addition to the stadium and everything else, would be that the district was made whole?
Yes.
I assume that that would be part of this agreement, whether it was West End or even Oakley. Because if it was in Oakley too ostensibly, that could also impact us. Is that, am I correct in thinking that?
Let me offer, it was, as everyone knows, the concept of a community benefits agreement was not brought up in November when we were exploring the opportunity to move forward in Oakley. It was brought up now when the West End has arisen as a topic. I don't want to speak for my friend David Mann. I would expect he would want it in place regardless, and we are supportive of having it in place regardless.
And I think that was kind of to echo, and it was a good piggyback off of Member Messer's point of like what that process does look like. Because there's so many ifs, and if-if-if, anything moves forward, if FC Cincinnati gets their MLS bid, what would that process look like so that we can ensure that our kids are still getting all the finances and need to be educated well?
I have said, and I'll say it here again, just so there's no missing it. Our commitment is, is that on every level, our partnership would lead to CPS being made whole or improved at every level of this partnership.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Bates.
Yes. I'm assuming that at the end of the month that we're going to, as a community, get the good news, which is, you know.
That's the hope.
That's the hope, but that's, that's, that's the assumption.
That is what makes this all work.
What, what is FCC's timeline from that point on? And at what point will we be asked to make some decisions?
To the Chair and to school board member. We would anticipate that by the end of March, we will, we will have everything we need to proceed on a stadium site. We're going to commit to engagement. You heard my reference to Oakley and getting that traffic study done so we can get out and roll up our sleeves and talk to residents in Oakley, which is the really critical factor in that neighborhood. And I testified before City Council that while the plan that we took to New York City showed, proved that we have an ability to build a soccer-specific stadium consistent with the requirements of MLS, I also promised the residents of Oakley and City Council that we would do that traffic study, and we would do full-scale engagement because there's a lot of concern about traffic in that neighborhood and particularly leap back leading into the CAS Fab site. And so we have to be able to continue to evaluate all the sites because it's certainly, there are challenges, as I indicated at the beginning. Our goal would be to continue the level of engagement here on the West End as it relates to a possible land exchange and see if that is viable. Obviously, we're going to continue to do outreach in the neighborhood with residents, with stakeholders. We'd like to continue talking to you. If at some point, I'll just say, if at some point it seems like that there's just not the willingness to proceed, that's why we're continuing to proceed into other neighborhoods. I don't anticipate that this would go all the way up through March 31st. I think some people didn't particularly like the way it worked at City Hall when it went right up to the last minute. But I guess my point is, we're almost at Valentine's Day, so we have about six weeks. That should allow a lot of engagement time in addressing people's concerns, talking about what should be in a community benefits agreement, et cetera. Does that answer your question, school board member?
I think more specifically, when, once you get all the information, engagement, when would you anticipate coming back to us to discuss the partnership further?
I'm here, we'd start that tonight if we could and continue talking for the coming weeks. I didn't mention this, and it's a key point that we've talked about. And if I glossed over it, I apologize. If we proceed, obviously, the first thing we would do is start working together on the development of the plan, the details, with our architects on this new and improved Stargell Stadium across the street. Once we had agreement on that, we'd start construction of that stadium. Nothing would happen to the existing Stargell Stadium until the new Stargell Stadium was open. So there would be no displacement. There'd be no loss of activities. There'd be no loss of facilities. Once the new one is open that we've planned together, then we'd move to the existing site if we get there. That timeline and the commitment to that timeline would be a part of a contract that we would all agree to if we get there.
Ms. Copeland-Dansby.
Thank you, Ms. Birding, for your presentation tonight. It's good to hear from you and to see photos and to hear from some of your support and partners in that. So I remain committed to the community. And I'm wanting to carry on the question from board member Bates a little bit deeper as we talk about people. If you can help me understand in all these things as we're talking about architects and buildings, in what way, number one, will we have opportunity to do some intentional, in-depth community engagement? A little bit more than knocking on doors. And I know knocking on doors is huge and very important. But, you know, we're talking about community benefits agreements. We're talking about, oh, it's just right across the street. This is great, this is great. How do we get to literally hear from folks who live in the West End? Who could potentially, who could potentially be partners in helping to move down the road in whichever way we go? Then number two, I hear us talking about traffic studies and environmental studies in Oakley. Will we do the same for the West End?
Yes.
So if we could talk about some of that community engagement that your team will do intentionally?
Well, as was presented, we've begun that process with Common where we've hired them to just survey residents. So that has been a big part. We're committed to do knock on every door in the West End. Obviously, as was shared, not everyone's going to open the door. Not everyone's going to talk. But we're at least making the effort to give everyone a one-on-one opportunity. That, number one. Number two, I'm committed to do town halls in the neighborhood. We could organize multiple, different times of the day, different days of the week. So if people work, can't make this one, they can make another one to give people the opportunity to hear directly from me and to have their questions answered. If we want to do some additional phone surveys for people that don't maybe want to answer the door, but maybe would talk to a telephone survey to get their feedback. Obviously, I think the more meetings we do like this, I think are helpful. I'll just share, I'm open to other thoughts. But I give you my commitment. We want to hear from the residents of the West End who are going to be impacted by this. We want to know what their thoughts are. Let me share. You know, when I was walking the Lynn Street Business District with Pastor Nick Burnett, a lot of commitments made over the years, he shared on the business district. Not a lot going on down there along, on street level. A lot of the retail that was promised never was delivered. Obviously, again, well before FC Cincinnati, but that fuels a lot of skepticism, a lot of cynicism. I get that. So there's a new federal law that creates these opportunity zones. And opportunity zones give tax advantages in census tracts that have been designated by, ultimately, by the governor. And so I've gotten with the mayor, and I've gotten with the governor's office to see if the Lynn Street Business District can be an opportunity zone and to give these advantages. I've reached out to the Port Authority to talk to the Port Authority. They were involved in drafting the West End Development Plan. You know, again, I wasn't involved. FC Cincinnati wasn't involved. But I asked the question and had a meeting with the Economic Development Director of the Port Authority, who's done work in Evanston and done work in other neighborhoods. How do we make this happen for the West End? How does FC Cincinnati, in this enormous private investment, how do we make this a catalyst for jobs, for economic opportunity? You know, our season goes from March to November. It's a long season. This past year, we averaged twenty-two thousand fans a game. This year will be twenty-eight to thirty thousand fans a game. I mean, a lot of people come to the stadium. Most of the games are on Wednesday at seven. Couple a year, the overwhelming majority are on Saturday nights, seven to nine. That's foot traffic. That's people that might stop to get a piece of pizza. Again, I would, don't take my word for it. Look what's going on in Clifton right now. The business district up there loves us. Let's help a business district grow here. But I want to stress to the member, to the vice chair, I'm not an economic development professional, you know? But we're willing to not only do the outreach to listen, but then to help pull in some of these organizations who should be helping us make this happen, should be helping the neighborhood make it happen. You know, I met with the end of LACP. Hey, I know that you have things that you want to see done. Sit at the table with us and help us get it done. You know? I can't say to speak for what's happened or what hasn't happened. But I do know this. Consistently, for the two and a half years we've been in existence, we have worked hard to be the team that does it the right way, to be a team that people can feel good about supporting. And so I'm an open invitation. Let's work together to make these things happen. And let's be the good story. Let's be the good, you know, the good start forward instead of the focus on the past and what hasn't worked.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving such a passionate answer and in-depth answer. And so my only encouragement would be that if we can continue to have open dialogue that is clear, where we all can understand it and bring folks to the table to help make decisions. And that includes the residents of the West End.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Mrs. Bolton.
And I too am pleased that you're here and making the presentation and being as specific as you are. I'm also appreciative of the fact that we have a more than full house tonight. So I don't think, I don't think community engagement's going to not happen. But I think the vice president's right about making sure that it's not just showing up and talking, but being authentic with one another. I think it's great. I have a couple of concerns financially. And some of these aren't your issues or problems, but perhaps the district and the city having to deal with it regarding when Member Morosky said something about make the district whole. In our vernacular, that means tax abatement issues and future tax revenue. And that's something that we're thrilled about, the private investment. I personally, as a homer, if you will, don't want this in Kentucky. But if it's going to be in Oakley or in West End, the reality for me is I don't want to see a loss of revenue in two decades. And so that's a concern. I'm concerned about the city's amount of money they're willing to spend on infrastructure for private developers that they weren't necessarily willing to spend on the FMP. That's not on you. That's not on you. On you, a very specific thing is the, at Stargell, it's my understanding, and I like that facility a lot and have enjoyed being there. And I love that it's literally in the neighborhood. And you can hear, you know, a couple blocks away, you can hear the fans and the band. But I'm worried about storage because I know that's been a weakness of the facility. And all these great improvements, office space has been a problem. So those sorts of improvements would be great, whether it's there or whether it's someplace else, would be really beneficial for everybody. My biggest concern, though, is the proximity of the possible new stadium to the high school. I know you're not touching the high school and the parking area. But to have twenty-some thousand people there and maybe our kids are there after school, or maybe it's a Saturday, or even just the cleanup. So that we've made, we've spent one point two billion dollars to have great facilities for our kids and locations. So there's a, it's that proximity that would, you'd have to overcome that with me to get me to believe that this can be, that this can be a real positive thing. But those are my issues.
Yes.
Birding, you want to respond?
Madam President, to board member Bolton, thank you for your comments. Let me say this. Steve is one of our architects. He's been working with us since we founded FC Cincinnati back in 2015. He was also the school board, CPS's architect, on all these facilities. Let me offer, if we start going down this road, continuing to contemplate this partnership, I would pledge to have CPS, your facilities people, Josh Harden, your athletic director, have them at the table sitting down with our architects. I want to stress this. If the proximity of an FC Cincinnati stadium doesn't work for the school board, guess what? It's not going to happen. Plain and simple. It has to work for you. I get that. I want to do stress, though. Our stadium, at, say, let's just call it twenty-one to twenty-five thousand seats, right? Paul Brown Stadium's sixty-eight, sixty-nine thousand seats. We're about a third, right? And then Great American Ballpark is somewhere in the forty-five or so thousand seats. So, you know, almost half. So we're not talking about this enormous structure right there in the neighborhood. This is much more akin to, you know, a small ballpark, like a Fenway Park or something. It's just the scale of it is meant to be. And it's the history of soccer where if you go to Manchester, England, or you go to some of these clubs, literally, the soccer stadium is built right into the neighborhood. And here's the steel mill. And here's where people are working, manufacturing. And here's the homes. And here's some of the retail, and there's the stadium. That's their club. And that is how we're trying to build this.
Thank you.
Okay. In the interest of time, I'm going to acknowledge Mr. Timmons, and then we're going to acknowledge Ms. Copeland-Dansby. Okay. And then I'm going to close it out. So, okay, Mr. Timmons?
Yes, Jeff. Thank you for coming in and showing me the diagram. Some of the questions I had, you kind of answered. And just me, let me say this too. I taught down at Bloom High, Junior High, from seventy-seven to eighty. And I used to play basketball down at the Fenley Street neighborhood, the house, the old Lincoln Center. So I'm pretty familiar with a lot of people downtown. Also, just teaching down there and teaching at Princeton and Middletown, you know, these particular areas, school districts, they're real close, the people are. And I know that people downtown don't want to see this happen. I know, well, some of them do and some of them don't. So I'm not, some of them do, some of them don't, you know? But my thing is that I just don't want to see people have to start all over in their life. I don't want to see people uproot it. And, you know, that's my whole deal, you know? And then I like to see, if all this happened, if you do have construction going on, which you will, of course, what kind of businesses are you going to have down? Are you going to have black-owned? Are you going to have some diversity in it? You know, that's real important to me because I run through. because I run through our own neighborhoods and I see construction crews. And I don't see any diversity there. You know, they ain't nothing, they ain't giving back to their own community. And that's what I want to see happen with these people down here, that this is going to happen.
Madam President.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I saw, I don't know if he's still here, former council member Winburn, Charlie Winburn was here. And I had the opportunity to work with him and Councilmember Smitherman and others on an inclusion program. It was a draft of an, we can improve it, but an inclusion program that at least was modeled after the casino, which compared to some of the other big projects in town, most people think that that went better than the others, that's for sure. And so, we have, we were absolutely willing to make, it'll be a part of a CBA, an inclusion program. The construction, the economic impact of the construction, Vori Sater had an impact study done by some folks from Ohio State. People ask, why'd you use Ohio State? Because no one would, if it was from UC, people might wonder if it was, you know, done for us. The economic impact, $560 to $600 million on the stadium wages $200 to $250 million, 2,200 some full-time jobs. There's no question, we will have inclusion that shares that benefit. And I'm willing to sign a legal document to commit to it, number one. Number two, we're going to work with the building trades to make sure that there's opportunities through apprenticeship programs and other things to make sure that the workforce that you're seeing on the site is diverse. We're going to need their help because almost all these jobs will be union.
Okay. Also, I know with soccer games, you know, there's a lot of tailgating, a lot of drinking. So what's up with that? I mean, so far as the safety in the community, you know, with our people?
Yeah. Let me say, there's a lot of people here that come to our games. And I'll just offer this. I spent 19 years at the Cincinnati Bengals. I was the guy that took the calls on Monday when people spent hundreds of dollars on tickets and parking and whatnot, and then had very poor experiences, largely resulting from overconsumption of alcohol. I am very familiar with what you're saying. I said at the very beginning, we created this team as a winning brand, a family-friendly brand, invisible in the community brand. And I'd invite you to come to our games. If you haven't been there, some of your colleagues have. We actually don't have challenges with overconsumption. We do not, we do not have problems with the behavior. And I'm familiar with the behavior because I saw it at the Bengals. That is not a challenge. But I will commit. We will put a security program in place. I just invited you to be a part of working with our architects to make sure that the school and people using the school are protected. So I won't walk back that commitment, but I'd invite people to come to our games and see for themselves. It is a part of our success. It is enormously family-friendly.
Thank you. So we're going to have one more comment and then I'd like to close it out, if that's okay. Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
Yeah. So the good part about it is I love getting texts from the audience while I'm sitting here.
Don't send her any more texts. No more.
I just want to, I just want to bring a couple things in summary. Number one, we're not sure that we heard enough about the tax abatement question, the answer to that, number one. Then number two, we talked about the community as a whole and that. We've got current students. We want to make sure that our students are going to have benefits beyond anything that we could even imagine and think of. And so we want to make sure that that's a part of the ongoing conversation as well. And then maybe just a little bit explanation about how the FC Stadium will join to the school or not, or just exactly where that placement is, based on your diagram.
Sure.
Can I ask a question before that? That sort of tags on to that. This, you, in your presentation, you talked about the first step being a concept proposal. Will these questions, and specifically around the specific issues that our community has raised, like community, intentional community engagement, tax abatement, all these other things, will that be a part of your concept proposal? I'm a little confused as what that is. And considering the timeframe that we have to work with, I think it's important for us to get everything packaged so that we can see what it looks like from a broader standpoint.
Sure. So let me start from that part and work back. I've invited CPS this evening, led by the board, to be a part of the process. So whether you designate some of your members, the superintendent, your lawyers, your finance, your facilities, that's your process. But I'm not so bold as to come before you today and say, well, here's what we're going to do. I've shared an initial vision of what it could be. And I've made some, I think, pretty strong commitments. And I said I'm willing to put those in a community benefits agreement to that end. And I acknowledge that we're going to, we would have to have a contract with CPS on top of that. Obviously, a lot of these things would need to be worked out. As it relates to an FC Cincinnati stadium on the existing footprint, here's the architect. We would need you to sit down. I think, you know, maybe the next presentation would be what that stadium could look like. And we can have a lot of questions about that. But I would need you to be a part of the process with the architects. We haven't done detailed design drawings yet. We've done some very preliminary, this is what the stadium could look like. That's all we've done up to this point. Because they tend to be pretty site-specific. And I haven't been so bold as to have detailed designs on your property. But if you're interested in continuing down this, then I'd want you to work with our architects on what, on how it would fit, on how it would fit. Same with some of the other details that you're asking about. Some of them are very site-specific. And of course, you know, require additional dialogue. I'm trying not to talk too long. Sorry, I know you want to get to the residents.
We're good, I think. Is it possible for us just to get a copy of your presentation?
You do have it. This is...
No, I mean, we have a hard copy. Do we have a hard copy?
No, we have it.
Do we have a hard copy that you can leave with us, is what I'm asking?
This is in your system. You could print it tonight.
Okay, okay. So we need a hard copy. So that's...
Yes.
Would be something I would request. Okay. So, in closing, we want to first thank you and Mr. Johnson. And I'm sorry...
Mr. Langenkamp.
Okay, Mr. Steve.
Mr. Steve.
Okay. For presenting to us tonight. I think it was helpful for you to come tonight and openly share with us sort of your initial vision around this proposed partnership. So we look forward to hearing more from you. And again, as many people around this table have said, the intentional community engagement and us being transparent about what's happening is the ultimate goal and priority for us. And so, we'll be having more opportunities to dialogue about this with our public present. So we appreciate that.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. So, our next presentation, Superintendent Mitchell, will you introduce the next speaker?
Yes. We thought that it would be appropriate to have our administrative staff come and talk with the board and the public regarding the current Stargill Stadium. So you will hear from Josh Harden, who is over athletics. He will talk about the current stadium. He will talk about the cost of the stadium, the specs, and how that stadium is currently being used in terms of all the different sporting activities that are offered there. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. And thank you, Jeff Birding and FCC, for your presentation. Appreciate it. And thank you, Board, for the opportunity to present on Willard R. Stargill Stadium. This presentation is intended to give a brief overview about the usage of Stargill Stadium. Here to assist, any questions that you might have, we have interim Chief Officer Bill Mooreing, Facilities Director Robin Brandon, and Assistant Superintendent over Athletics, amongst many other things, Bill Miles. As part of the facilities master plan, starting in 2002, CPS decided to build Centers of Excellence. These magnet facilities were built to service multiple schools as the goal was to provide our students with the best facilities possible in centralized locations as to the alternative of building less facilities and, or more facilities with lower quality. Stargill Stadium was dedicated in 2004. The initial project cost was $5,459,000. And with upgrades in 2015, the total cost was $5,856,000. Currently, in addition to our stadium at Taft High School, we have our other stadiums in the district that happen to all be at RW schools. I don't know how it worked out that way, but that's how it is. We have stadiums at Walnut Hills, Western Hills, Withrow, and Woodward High School. So for our stadium specs, Stargill Stadium holds 3,000 fans, 2,000 on our home side and 1,000 on our visitor's side. The stadium contains a synthetic turf field striped for football and soccer, an eight-lane track with all field events minus pole vault. The fieldhouse contains locker rooms for home and visitors as well as restrooms for fans and our officials. There's one press box on the home side of the stands currently with five rooms and two entry, home and away admission gates with attached concession stands. The stadium maximizes fan comfort and traffic flow and is designed so the spectators can quickly exit. So as you can see, the teams that utilize Stargill, we have six of our high school football teams that currently play games on Thursday, Friday, or Saturdays at Stargill Stadium. Of those schools, we have Aiken, Gamble, Hughes, Riverview East, Schroder, and of course, Taft. Euler High School is looking to start up football and bring it back as a club this next season. And then the following year, look to bring it back officially as a sport, meaning we would need additional space for another school to participate. In regards to track and field, we've got Taft, Gamble, Riverview East, and Sailor Park. And continuing to offer equitable opportunities for our junior highs and our standalone junior highs, we'll see that number grow as well. So for our non-CPS schools, Cincinnati College Prep Academy and St. Joseph's utilize the facility, as well as our community partners. As you heard from some of our community partners earlier on with the West End Little Senators, we also have Mo Hill Track Club, Bond Hill Flyers Track Club, Gotham Soccer, Kings Hammer Soccer, Cincinnati Christian University, Ohio Premier Football League, and the Cincinnati Gators Semi-Pro Football Team that utilize the facility. Other uses, in addition to our Taft High School physical education classes, we also add special events, such as the 2017 Special Olympics. The wheelchair events were held at Stargill this past summer. We have other projects, such as the Cincinnati Bengals came out and hosted some camps, as well as did a few commercials out there. And for the future and upcoming, this summer, we've partnered up with Project Connect on hosting a Summer Sports Field Day, as well as partnered up with the Cincinnati Recreation Commission. And we'll be hosting multiple camps with them throughout this summer, including our tracking field and flag football camp. We're excited about that partnership. In regards to our high school teams that compete in athletics and football during the fall, this past season, we had 29 games that were played. Last year, we had 31 games. And for next year, we have scheduled at 35 games, with the potential of that number growing if any of our teams that play at that facility make it to the playoffs, like we had this past year with the Taft Senators giving us an opportunity to host the playoffs. There's Stargill Stadium there. In closing, I'll read an email from our Hall of Fame official, Bobby Sagers, who also does all of the signing for our football games at Stargill Stadium. Bobby Sagers, at the end of this season, sent me an email that said, "Stargill Stadium is great for our high school football games. I have refereed games for over 30 years. And looking back at that downtown skyline from Stargill Stadium is one of the neatest and breathtaking views the city has to offer. Also, a lot of other refs feel the same with that view. Just a great atmosphere for high school football games. Always a pleasure to work games at the Stargill Stadium." At this time, if you have any questions in regards to athletics and the facilities, myself and the administration can answer them.
Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Morosky.
Thank you so much, Josh, for that. It was awesome.
Absolutely.
So, to piggyback off Ms. Bolton, her question to Mr. Birding in the last presentation. Stargill Stadium is an awesome facility that tons of schools use. What do you think can make Stargill even better, even though it's already the best? Just from my own edification. What do you think could make it even better?
Sure. So as Board Member Bolton mentioned, storage is huge. Right now, we're utilizing some of the facility there for district storage, some for storage for Taft. And we're overflowing right now. So storage would be huge. Little things that the Taft Athletic Director, activities beyond the classroom, and other people that have used the facilities have sent over somewhat of a wish list that said, Josh, if anything were to happen, you know, this is the long list. So I've got emails and emails and pages and pages that I could go through right now, if you'd like. But, you know, storage, space, and like I said, there's quite a few things that we'd look to enhance if we had the opportunity.
Appreciate it. In the interest of time, so we can hear everybody. You can just email it to me.
I already know, no doubt about it.
Ms. Bates?
I have a couple questions. First of all, I know the community uses Stargill. So at what hours are the community members able to use the facility?
Yes, when it's open and available. So any community member can go through the process of doing the rental application online. And then that goes to the principal and the athletic director. They evaluate what's currently on the field with our schools and our teams, with practices and games. And then, at that time, they work with the athletic director and principal to identify what is open and available. And then they'll, you know, allow them to use the field.
Well, I'm just thinking of community members. I go over to Withrow and use the track. Is the facility open for community members to use for their personal training?
Sure, the same. I'm currently positioned over at Woodward and I see people walk in the track at all times. So, and when I was at Walnut Hills, the same thing happened. So I haven't been down as much at Stargill during the day to see what that looks like. But, and being there before games and some of the soccer clubs that come in and utilize the facilities, there are people that will walk the track and utilize the field.
And also, where do our soccer teams play other than the Walnut teams right now?
So currently, the schools with the RW schools that I was mentioning, those are schools our schools that have varsity high-level soccer programs. Currently, I'm working with Brent Langhorn and Elementary Athletics to provide more camps and clinics, obviously working with FCC on our footstool initiative that we're doing in the elementary schools to give our elementary kids the equitable opportunity to then get to their high school and have a chance to play. So, at this time, those schools that I mentioned with the stadium have a soccer team. Our other schools do not. So, it's our hopes to grow the other schools to have that opportunity. So, we're talking about multiple facilities needed for soccer as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments?
Of course, Mr. Harden, I'm always excited to see you.
Right back at you.
And thank you so much for the work that you're doing with our schools. You've made a tremendous impact in a very short period of time with your new appointment, I guess a couple of years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. So, you know, Stargill is very near and dear to all of us, and I can remember, you know, back in the day, just being there, and several years ago, my own son played football, little league football there, oh, and high school football there, yeah. So, some of the questions are, you know, as we move forward with the list that you're creating or making, if you can really help the board to understand or help the board push forward what our students need, and in a way that we may not even currently have. You know, we have perhaps opportunity for the increased storage that you mentioned and that. And then, we want to advocate that we continue to have some sort of view, because that view is amazing there and that. So, if you could, as you're making your list, if you could just really help us think of things that only you and perhaps your team, you and your team and your expertise know, so that we can ensure those things get pushed forward.
For sure. And that list was created long before FC Cincinnati came into the picture. So, if you've been out to Stargill this past season, you'll see more signage throughout the facility, on the press box, a big sign on Stargill, and just overall enhanced presentation of the facility. It's been my initiative to implement that throughout this year. So, I was able to reallocate some funds to be able to bring the new signage to Stargill this year. So, that list has started. We'll continue on, and we'll keep that in consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And if you also could consider helping us understand how, you know, having perhaps, you know, some soccer situation there would affect our school community and vice versa, just given the activities that happen there, the schedule of six schools plus others and that. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Harden, for your comprehensive presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, what you've heard to this point is Mr. Burden's presentation on behalf of FC Cincinnati, and Mr. Harden, who gave us some sort of logistical and practical information about Stargill Stadium. Tonight's presentation is an initial start. It really is the first time we've had the information presented to us. We're still planning to continue our conversation with FCC Cincinnati. We continue to commit to transparency and community engagement. I just wanted to let you know, before we move on to announcements and hearing of the public, we were planning, based on our last conversation at the last meeting when our public was here, we were planning a community forum which would allow the public to engage in a dialogue in an open-mic session with FC Cincinnati and the board. However, we learned that the date that we had tentatively scheduled for that conflicts with the West End Community Council's meeting on the 20th, and we did not want to have people to make a choice about which meeting they wanted to go to. So, we are going to reschedule our meeting. Tentatively, it is the 21st at 6:00, which is a day after, but we will notice. So, it'll be on our website, and agencies and things, if you're on our mailing list, you will get that notice of that meeting, which again, will be held on the 21st, which is Wednesday. Is that correct? Wednesday? Okay. So, we are now at the item on the agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes. Now, we have almost 50 speakers, and we want to hear everybody, and we want to give you three minutes. But if you can say what you have to say in less than that, we'd appreciate that, because we want to have everybody heard. We will have to cut you off at three minutes per se, because we do want to make sure everybody gets heard. Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. You will hear a little buzz go off when your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak, and I am going to call folks in groups of five, so you can be ready and we can just keep it flowing. Now, the other thing is, is that we want to be as respectful to the next speaker as possible. So, we understand that people may want to speak and leave, but if you could do that quietly so that it doesn't kind of disrupt the flow, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. So, our first speakers are Craig Rosen, Wendell Young, State Senator Cecil Thomas, Kelly Prather, and Dwight Tilley.
Good evening, Superintendent Mitchell, President Jones, board members, Treasurer Wagner, administration, and guests. I'm proud to say that I am a friend of CPS, and with such, I thought that it was important that we come out and talk about a couple of things we heard here tonight. First off, I'd like to give some kudos out to Josh Harden and Brent. Originally, tonight, I think there was going to be a discussion regarding elementary sports, and I find no greater time than right now to, again, remind the board that we need to fund our athletics department, possibly via a community benefits agreement. But if we can find ways to support our elementary schoolchildren in athletics, whether it be funded through USA Basketball, through Walnut Hills Youth Clinics, via other areas, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice to not support what Josh is doing and find ways to further fund his department so we can get a true analysis of what our athletics look like, not just in the high school and junior high level, but especially in the elementary level. However, what I'd like to do is talk to you for a few minutes about what we heard here tonight about FCC. I'm not going to speak about whether we should or should not do a land swap as it relates to the stadium site, but rather about the process. As we know, in Oakley, the Oakley Community Council came out against the stadium originally because there was not proper engagement and discussion with the community, with the residents, with the business owners. As we heard Mr. Burden say, eight months ago, it was publicly announced where the three sites are. Yet, in November, they came to Oakley. Oakley requested a traffic study, and here we are in February. And while he might have met with the newly-installed Oakley Community Council President yesterday, the community still has no idea what the results of those studies are, nor there have been discussions about what community benefit Oakley would need, such as recreation center, such as Edwards Connector, such as improving our pedestrian and bicycle friendliness. All those have yet to be discussed openly and publicly with the extended community. So, my concern here today is, again, eight months ago, we heard about the West End, and now we're coming to Cincinnati Public Schools roughly four to six weeks before an MLS announcement, trying to push through a stadium deal. I strongly encourage Cincinnati Public Schools to utilize the engagement resources it has with its local school decision-making committee at Taft, in addition to partner with the West End Community Council for long-term viable community engagement that is transparent and open to everybody. What, excuse me, what we heard Athletic Director Josh Harden say is that he has a laundry list of items that would improve the current stadium. However, I am sure that residents have additional opportunities to weigh in. And without having those representatives speak, and I'm not just talking about West End representatives, but people like me who are passionate about our schoolchildren and want to provide the best opportunities that we can do. We saw how many people utilize that. If we had a new stadium, maybe more would utilize it, but without having community engagement and being transparent, we'll never know.
You, Mr. Rosen. Councilman Wendell Young?
Madam President, board members, thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. Let me make clear, even though I'm a member of Cincinnati City Council, and I'm speaking in that capacity as well as a citizen, I am not representing in any way the sentiments of Cincinnati City Council. We've not taken this up. What I want to say to you, and there's so much I'd like to say, I don't think three minutes is enough time, but what I'd like to say to you is be very careful in your consideration, deliberation of the offer you've seen here this evening. It looked really great on the screen. It looked really great. But here's what I want to say to you. FC Cincinnati has said over and over and over again that what they believe they are bringing to the community is a benefit. I would argue not necessarily so. While they say that they will have nothing to do with relocating people or displacing people, I suspect that is true. But the reality is simply this: We have a historical neighborhood full of people who basically will have no other place to go if they are displaced. We've seen progress come to poor and underserved neighborhoods all over this city. It generally ends up with misery for those who are there, with promises that they can return, but they do not. FC Cincinnati, in order to build this stadium, will need the same infrastructure and the same kinds of studies that are being done in Oakley. I can assure you, there will be displacement of residents. Traffic patterns will demand that. There will be displacements of residents as other people begin to speculate about what they can do in that community. FC Cincinnati believes, as they said in Oakley, their stadium will bring business. And I'm saying to you, where do you think business is going to locate or want to locate? People in residential areas should be concerned. We've seen this before. And the West End in particular has seen this kind of thing happen, always in the name of progress. Interstate 75, in the name of progress, uprooted thousands of people and sent them all over the city, because no one had a plan for where people should go. There was a community there called Kenyon Bar. You may not know it. It's called Queens Gate today. Over 25,000 people uprooted in the name of progress, and what do we have there now? I'm simply saying to you that there aren't that many historical neighborhoods left in this city inhabited by mainly African-Americans. There is, as far as I know, no other stadium in our city named for an African-American. I will commend the Cincinnati Public School System for naming several of your buildings after African-Americans. But if you look at Cincinnati as a whole, you will wonder that African-Americans ever exist. Our names are not on the names of public buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Your time is up. Thank you.
I simply urge you not to be a part of gentrifying the West End. Thank you.
Thomas? Before you begin, I, please, we're asking you, we understand the emotion, but we're asking you, just so we can hear also, everybody wants to hear what's being said. So, please be respectful of that. Thank you.
Thank you. President Jones, Vice President Danzby, members of the school board. My name is Cecil Thomas. I am the state senator representing the 9th District of the state of Ohio. I am also a product of the West End, and the community of the West End is in my district. I'm here to speak on the request by FC Cincinnati to do a land swap, buy their land, whatever they call it, with CPS, with CPS property in the West End, more specifically, Stargill Stadium, to build a 25,000 to 30,000-seat Major League Soccer Stadium. This matter, first of all, should be decided by a supermajority of the residents that either live, own, or rent property in the West End community. While I support Cincinnati's desire to build a Major League Stadium, I cannot support it being located in the West End. According to the 2010 census, the West End has a population of approximately 6,627 residents. It is a residential neighborhood, rich in African-American history. Historically, a black neighborhood, the West End is full of Cincinnati-style townhomes, row houses, and infield projects such as City West. It is also the home of Dayton Street, once known as Millionaire Row, because of its fantastic mansions, many which are still there. Richmond Village and Park Town have also survived the difficult period. Stargill Stadium, Ezra Charles Drive, Stowe School, Sterling Hotel, Ted M. Berry, and the renowned Cotton Club. These aren't just names. They are just a few reminders of the rich history. In addition to the great assortment of homes and over 6,000 residents, 4,400 are families, and more than half of those are children. There are 13 churches, four schools, an adult education center, two community centers, a YMCA, Ted M. Berry Head Start Program, building, a Windmed Health Services, and of course, a business district. It is, it's ample, it has ample green space and outside playground facilities. What it doesn't have is a grocery store and a drugstore. And very few residents have cars. There's no store in walking distance, and the bus transportation is very, is very limited. This is problematic for seniors and single moms.
Mr. Thomas, we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Prather?
Madam President, to the board, to our esteemed superintendent, thank you all so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Kelly Prather. I'm a taxpaying citizen and a former resident of the West End in Cincinnati, Ohio. I come here today, and I'm so happy to hear that you all delayed the vote, and you will not make a decision tonight, because I was going to request that you delayed the vote to, for FC Cincinnati to be built on Taft High School Stadium. I was intentional in saying Taft High School Stadium, because it's clear that they want to make a separate, they want to make Taft High School Stadium and Stargill Stadium seem like separate and distinct entities, and it's not. Taft High School Stadium was built in 1986. It was rebuilt and named after Willard Stargill in 2003. That is Taft High School Stadium. Mr. Burden, Jeff Burden, said that they will not touch Taft High School. That's a lie. The average stadium, Paul Brown Stadium, is 22 acres in size. If you take Stargill Stadium, you are basically taking the entire community. Let the record reflect that I am not anti-MLS. I am not anti-FCC. I am anti-gentrification, and I am pro-the West End. It was honorable. It was honorable. And Nick Johnson is someone who I grew up with, and it was honorable that he petitioned Nick Johnson to come here and talk about what Taft Stadium does for Nick Johnson and the Little Senators. I was just most recently at the Little Senators Awards Bank at Taft Stadium. So, I understand that Taft Stadium means so much to so many people. When individuals cannot afford to have repass services after individuals are murdered in communities, Taft Stadium, Taft High School opens up its doors for community members. That is honorable. Mr. Burden said that there are three potential sites. I am begging, I am begging him that he consider one of the other sites, and do not take, do not take the West End. Oakley would like to have it in their community. Take it there. Newport is asking. Now, I understand that we need the money in this community. We need the money in Ohio, and I would love for it to stimulate our economy, but I'm asking that you put people over profits. You put your pupils over profits. One of our elected officials said the elections have consequences. One of my concerns, and I shared this with you before, is the relationship between the public and private partnerships and the relationship between our elected officials and the business community. Again, one of our elected officials said the elections have consequences. The way that you decide on this is basically a reflection of how you, how much you care about the community. We love you. We trust, we trusted you to get in these positions to do right by the community. Coach Timmons, you know the value of having a healthy athletic team. I'm asking you, do not vote for this. Erica, you grew up in the West End, and it's clear that you're passionate about this, and we grew up together. I'm asking you, please do not support this. What's interesting, okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. The next, the next, the next group, and I apologize if I'm misspelling, mispronouncing your name. Clement Sal, so, can you read that? Tasso. Josh Spring. Ali Graff. Is it John Harshaw? And Gwen Marshall?
Good evening. I'm actually not here to speak on FC Cincinnati, but I'm actually here in my capacity as Chair of the Preschool Workforce Development Council convened by CPS. And again, my name is Clement Sal. And again, my name is Clement Sal. Back on July 24, 2017, this body passed the resolution adopting the Preschool Workforce Development Council Charter, which formally established the Workforce Development Council in order to, quote, "establish a career pathway for educators and ensure adherence to applicable professional employment standards by participating providers," unquote. For the last several months, our council has been hard at work, and I'm here today to give a brief report of the work our council has been doing. One of the initiatives we've begun is to engage community providers in what we've called listening sessions, where member of our council and CPS staff in coordination with various community groups invite private and community providers to share their experiences in their early childhood field, the challenges they face, and their hopes for the future. The goal of these sessions has been to learn from their experiences and incorporate their feedback in order to work towards facilitating resources that will allow them to attain their credentials, receive coaching and professional development, and ultimately elevate the level of quality and standards to make early childhood education not just a rewarding career, but a sustainable one. I'm also pleased to share that in recent months, we've been working and coordinating more closely with the Cincinnati Preschool Promise staff, and I'd like to acknowledge Mary Ty, Brittany Pina, and Florence Malone for their tireless work, along with our own CPS staff member Kelly Bagayoko for all her assistance in supporting the work of our Workforce Council. And of course, I want to also thank the interim ED, Stephanie Byrd, for all of her assistance as well, and look forward to working with the new ED, Shiloh Turner. The final point I'd like to leave you with is that the support and investment we make in our early childhood workforce, the majority of whom are women of color, will potentially be the determining factor in whether 20 to 30 years from now we'll have been successful in providing access to quality preschool to children across the city. Research has shown that classrooms and programs the lowest teacher pay have the highest turnover, which are as high as 25 to 50% annually for preschool teachers. How we compensate our early childhood workforce is directly related to turnover, stability in the classroom, and the quality of learning and development children can have. Towards this end, in the upcoming weeks and months, our council will be working with the Cincinnati Preschool Promise to develop and implement a wage demonstration project, and I look forward to coming back in future meetings to report this effort. I've left you all with an article, a recent New York Times, you may have seen it, highlighting the importance in investing in our childhood workforce. And I want to thank you so much for listening, and I look forward to reporting back in future meetings.
Thank you.
Josh Spring, Executive Director of the Greater Cincinnati Homeless Coalition. We're a coalition of 60 different organizations throughout Hamilton County, mostly in Cincinnati. Homelessness in our city is at the worst that it has ever been. 70% of families with children that seek shelter are turned away with nothing because we have a housing crisis. Recent reports show that we have a shortage of 40,000 units of affordable housing. This year, about 20% of your students, our students, will experience homelessness. 20% of Cincinnati Public School children will experience homelessness. For black boys in your school district, they have a life expectancy that's 10 years less than their white counterparts. For black girls, they have a life expectancy that's six years less than their white counterparts. 40,000 units short. 20% of your kids without a home at some point this year, and we're discussing a soccer stadium. We should, we can't trust what everybody says, but what we can do is we can trust history. And history shows us that developments like this one, whether Jeff puts folks directly out of their homes or not, lead to displacement. And over the Rhine, in the last 15 years, we have lost 2,300 units of affordable housing, and that wasn't done by one company. That was done because folks came in, and then other folks came in and said, here's an opportunity to make a bunch of money. And that's what would happen in the West End. In fact, the land that we're talking about, already thousands of people were displaced from this very spot. They were all guaranteed that they'd be able to move back. They all got a certificate saying they'd be able to move back. One in 10 got to move back. One in 10. And so I don't know why we would believe that suddenly history won't repeat itself because we'll write it into an agreement and we'll make it so. I've got an idea. The Linder family could take $350 million and build some affordable housing. They could start paying living wages to their employees, and they could actually assist your families, your pupils, in getting housing that is sustainable. They could end homelessness, them and their partners, for your schoolchildren. They could do it, but they're talking about a soccer stadium.
I was also going to say, it's kind of ironic to be at a school board meeting, and maybe we're forgetting history here, where Jeff Burden gave us the worst stadium deal in all of North America. And another point, you don't, if somebody tells you that they, that they feel the need to explain their process of community engagement to quell your fears about their community engagement, then they're like lying, because you would know if they were engaging the community properly. You have the community here, and they're all going to say no. How many people is it going to take saying no before you finally will also say no? Or do you just keep waiting and kicking the can down the road and waiting until folks, you know, don't have the time to come back? And another thing about stadium jobs, stadium jobs suck. Stadium jobs do not pay more than, hardly more than minimum wage, which is another reason why we have such high homelessness. They have no benefits. You have people working in stadiums, at the Bengal Stadium, that live in subsidized housing because they cannot afford any other sort of housing. Oh, that's a meal, Scott.
Good evening. I'm John Harshaw. I was born here, 856 Carr Street, moved to 1037th Street, onto the Laurel Homes, and up to 1512th Central Avenue. I am the author of Cincinnati's West End, which gives you a history of what we had, and what people, as we see tonight, who came into our communities and said it's going to be a better place, and we're going to give you better housing, because now you're living in slums. That never happened. Also, we had no representative on the board to make the decision, and they made a decision not only to tear down a community that had 35,000 people, 3,000 businesses, that's seven movie theaters. We had the largest, second-largest outdoor swimming pool at Lincoln Center in the United States, just not at other places around the city. But they came in and they took all of that. That decision was made on a race basis. And anyone that tells you we looked at the plans and this is what we decided, they're lying to you. Because you ask Oscar Robertson why the expressway took his neighborhood. Ask people in Dayton why the expressway took the black community there. Ask people in Columbus and Indianapolis why it only took the black community in building these expressways. And it was all built on race. The terrible part was, after they tore down the community, they wanted to come back and tear down some more so they could have parking for those people going to the Reds games, okay? Because they felt like they could come and do whatever they wanted to do. That didn't happen because they ended up with some flat tires, broken windows in their cars, and stuff like that. I think the key thing missing here, the elephant that's missing in the room, is what you've requested. It's a physical document that tells everybody exactly what your plan is, even if it's on your website or whatever. Because just to say we're going to create jobs, as the young lady just said, what are those jobs? What will they pay? And who will get them? You know, to say, I'm going to expand my brewery in the West End, I'll have 300 jobs, but two people from the residents will work there, is not economic development. Because your community grows not on just jobs in your community, but the circulation of those dollars around your community, okay? And if you don't live in the community, you can't spend your dollars at the local cleaners. You can't spend your dollars at the local shoe shop. So it's important to understand what the impact is going to be on this neighborhood. I would certainly vote no, but I would look forward to seeing a physical plan, either on the website or for real. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harshaw.
Hi, my name is Gwen Marshall. I am a co-chair of the Hamilton County Green Party, and I understand you're interested in hearing about taxes. I'd suggest, one, you need to look at what the county approved on 11/29/17, and I'm going to read from part of what the city approved on where they're doing all of their giveaways. First off, I would support the FCC staying at UC or sharing Paul Brown Stadium. Well, it appears that Paul Brown Stadium is three times too big for what they want, but instead they're talking about turning the Taff Stadium into something that's 10 times too big for what the school wants. So look at the math. And again, that's what I'm into here, is the math. I would support a stadium that did not take money from the public, that did not take money from the public for related infrastructure, that did not use tax abatements, that did not have additional negative impacts on stormwater, roads, traffic, or neighborhood residents or businesses. I would support a stadium that was not going to piggyback on the back of the Port Authority so that it wouldn't have to pay property tax. That was number five of the wherayses that the city passed, that they would get that deal. On the next set of wherayses, they're about to give them 7.250 of our TIF money. That's all the TIF money that the city had. The reason Oakley at first opposed it was it was their TIF money. Now that it's our TIF money, Oakley says, oh, okay, that's someone else's money. Then they want to take 7.383 million of the Blue Ash money from the airport. And then they want to take 30 years' worth of hotel tax, basically. And, oh, I forgot to mention that the deal with the Port Authority, they can buy them out and say enough is enough after 20 years, but we're still paying on it for 30 years. But the soccer people can leave after 20 and leave us with an empty stadium. So just in case anyone needs to do some reading, that was all in what the city council, five people, passed. Obviously, I'm not very supportive of it, and I said so at the time. You need to look at the C version, which included that they wanted the city of Cincinnati to appropriate 2.5 million from the capital budget in 2019. They also wanted to grab at least 15,000, I'm sorry, a million dollars for their 1,000-unit parking garage that the county would pay for, but they said they wanted it pad-ready, the county did. That was their one little condition. And another little irritating thing is that they get to keep half of their income taxes that their people would pay for the next 15 years to be used to ask for more money from the state.
Thank you.
That's the taxes we're losing.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Thank you. The next, the next five, the next five people, Iris Rowley, Peter Hames, Clayton Adams, Sterling Rogers Trice, and Andrew Qwitz. And again, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Yes.
Okay, got it. Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President, to the board, superintendent, and to all the community people who thought that this was enough to come out, to the taxpayers, I greet you in the name of our babies. My name is Iris Rowley, and I am the owner of Rose Show Awards and Graphics. We just celebrated 17 years. We're the only black-owned engraver in the region, and we make trophies. I don't know you, sir. And we do more community work in this community than the law will allow. This past summer, we did a survey that was analyzed by the University of Cincinnati in conjunction with our police reform. So if you know Iris Rowley, you all know about the collaborative agreement. And in that survey, the very first question was, who do you trust? Is it CPS, CPD, the court system, or city government? And across the board, from African-Americans to non-African-Americans, the least one that was trusted was city government. The reason why, and CPS was second. The reason why I bring that up is because this chaos lands at your door today. The chaos that was delivered to us in City Hall. Had this been a topic across the city during an election cycle that we elected city council and a mayor, we could have had a far greater, deeper dialogue, Jeff. Had this been part of the conversation, we could have vetted, we could have talked about it, we could have dreamed about it, and we could have helped you deliver a product that we all would have benefited from. This is the chaos that the black community is talking about that it's tired of. So I want to challenge the board tonight. I want to ask for a different type of government from our city leaders that we've elected to represent us at the school level. Of course, we will be back at City Hall. Of course, we will be. But we're here tonight because you're here to make a very important decision about something that will impact us whether people are truthful or not. We've seen it time and time again, and I thank you, Mr. Harshaw, for bringing that excellent, excellent, necessary historical reference tonight, because when it talks, when we talk about African-Americans, we have no history, we have no trauma, we have no pain, we have no warrants, we have nothing that is relevant and that should be considered at the time of implementation. Diversity, inclusion doesn't happen afterwards. It starts in the beginning of something when you talk about it. So I want to challenge you all tonight, Madam President. I want to challenge you to deliver something different as you receive the information, because we've all heard so much over the last weeks and months about this deal. I'm not seeing it, Mr. Burden, I would love, I'm a product of CPS and I read very well. And so I would love to be able to read something. I would love to be able to put something in my hand so I can tell my grandchildren now that what will be built will benefit them.
Thank you, Ms. Rowley.
I can't see that, and I need it.
Thank you.
So please be transparent with us.
Thanks.
And it's Mrs.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. My name is Peter Hames. I'm a resident of Over the Rhine. I'm also a member of the Over the Rhine Community Council and was a co-author of this report, "Strength in Unity: How to Create a Flourishing Culture of Citizen Engagement in the City of Cincinnati." I'm also a member of the Over the Rhine Community Council's Ad Hoc Committee on the FCC Stadium. Rightly, the West End has been the primary focus of questions about neighborhood engagement, impacts upon the neighborhood, and the community council of Over the Rhine stands with the West End Community Council, especially in the name of improved and authentic citizen engagement. But you know that Over the Rhine is just a block and a half away from the stadium. If there are 25,000 fans visiting that stadium, there no doubt will be impacts upon Over the Rhine. Those impacts would include parking questions, traffic management questions. How will housing be affected in Over the Rhine? Just across the street, isn't that far away for major impacts? And I appreciate the fact that you have raised these questions, just that we intend to raise these questions as a participant in the community benefit agreement with FC Cincinnati. Cincinnati. Others have said, and just to repeat, Councilmember Mann has introduced a motion requiring a community benefits agreement. Mr. Birding tonight reassured you and committed again to you that they were going to enter into this benefits agreement, and it surely would be something of a breakthrough if the school board cooperated with the City of Cincinnati. Those two governmental agencies work together on a question of community benefit agreement, I believe. You have mentioned several issues. I think I've mentioned a few for you. As you deliberate this question, this important question for the City of Cincinnati as well as the neighborhood, what will success look like for the residents of the neighborhoods? A question for you to consider, if there are concerns that the residents have, and you've heard a whole litany of them tonight, what will be your contribution to addressing and resolving those concerns? Finally, I'd like to say, I think there are three things that I'd ask you to bear in mind. One is be skeptical. It's appropriate to be skeptical when a huge deal comes to you like this. These folks have talked to you about the history, and I think they form a basis of some skepticism, and surely you wanna have an arm's-length transaction, whatever that looks like. Second, do not be-
Thank you, I'm sorry.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My second time here in a couple of weeks, so like I know all of y'all now. I would like to say, this can be very short, 'cause a lot of things have already said. But I remember some years ago, I used to work on the council with Over the Rhine, and back then, that was when the Hyatt and Saks was gonna be built downtown there. They told all those people down there at Over the Rhine that, "Wait a minute, we're gonna give y'all jobs down at the Saks and Over the Rhine." I mean, down at Saks and the Hyatt. I said, "Watch out now, when they say that, it might not be true." Well, to make a long story short, it wasn't true. They might've hired a couple of people, came in the front door, and they was X'd off the back door for a short period of time. Now, we've heard some of the same things tonight about jobs and everything, but I got a question. On that diagram that he showed about the new stadium, now, maybe my glass was a little dirty, I didn't quite see it, but I didn't see anything about parking. Now, if I'm correct, that parking is gonna expand, and all those houses where people live at, they'll have to move. Something gonna happen. That parking is gonna take up the rest of that land down there where they're talking about putting the stadium at, you know? And I think I remember Craig said, "It's gonna be over to Clark Street." That's gone. Back on Ezra Charles Drive, that's gonna be gone. You know? And what's gonna happen to the original Stargel Stadium where this is, when that gets done? What's gonna happen to the original Stargel Stadium? What's happened to it? Well, probably, as someone just mentioned, parking. They are probably gonna use the land for parking, and it's gonna knock a lot of people out of their homes. A lot of people gonna be knocked out of their home. So we gotta think about that, we gotta look at that. If you're a design engineer, he must think about that too, 'cause a lot of people in the West, I don't live in the West End anymore, I used to a long time ago, but the people living down there now, they will be displaced. I'm telling you, they will be displaced, 'cause that parking is gonna take up a lot of houses and a lot of homes in the West End. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent Mitchell. My name's Clayton Adams. I'm a teacher at Aiken High School, and I wanted to speak tonight concerning Stargel Stadium, FC Cincinnati's stadium plans for the West End. Although I do not live or work in the West End, I know that Aiken's football team uses the stadium as their home field, and the stadium is very important to our school and all the schools that use it. As a taxpayer and employee for Cincinnati Public Schools, I hope the Board will not be bullied into accepting a bad deal or engaging corporate welfare for millionaires. I encourage the Board to be as transparent as possible and refuse to participate in shady backroom deals. Lastly, it should be stressed that FC Cincinnati needs to pay their fair share in property taxes, because these funds will directly benefit our incredible school district and our incredible students. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrew Kusevich. I know, the last name is a doozy. I can thank my grandparents who immigrated from Ukraine. I came, I come to you as a history teacher, and we've heard a lot about history. So I am not a teacher in the CPS system, but I did do my student teaching at Aiken High School. Obviously, I am pro-FC Cincinnati and I am pro-MLS. I think an FC Cincinnati stadium would be good in the West End, but ultimately, it's not up to me, it's up to these people. It's up to the West End community to determine whether they want the stadium in their community or not. As a history teacher, we in my class study continuity and change. It would be continuing in the pattern of political lies for FC Cincinnati to come in and make empty promises. It would be change, positive change at that, for FC Cincinnati to fulfill what Mr. Birding has talked about tonight and to be community partners, to build a bigger, better Stargel Stadium and to be a positive influence in the community. In my classroom, we talk about SMART goals, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely goals. My request is that CPS, FCC, and the West End community can come together to create and implement SMART goals. If the West End community, as a majority, is genuinely not interested, I believe as a fan that FC Cincinnati should go elsewhere. If there is a vocal minority, I believe that FCC should address that vocal minority and work with them. Ultimately, I think that it should be up to the West End community as a whole, and not just the loudest voices, but all of the voices. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of five, LaShawn Taylor, Tom Savaco, Marlena Brownfield, Carol Brown, Amy Scrogan, or Scrogan?
Hello.
Hello.
Everyone, my name is LaShawn Taylor. I was born and raised on Ezra Charles Drive, 599 Ezra Charles Drive. I'm still a resident in the West End community. I am here because I am against FCC building a stadium anywhere in the West End. It's a residential area, it's where we live, place of worship, we have businesses. That's the only, well, it's two high schools down there, but that stadium is for TAF. Leave it there. It was dedicated to a man, a great man that went there, taught. Leave it there, don't move it. We don't want it. I'm kinda nervous, but I wanna add, I don't even, we shouldn't even be here. This shouldn't even be brought to the table. When they knocked on y'all's door, y'all shouldn't even open the door. This ain't even open for negotiation. No, we don't want it. We don't want it, it's that simple. We don't want it. Let them go somewhere else. Y'all go somewhere else, please, go somewhere else.
Would you address the Board, please?
Tell them to go somewhere else.
I got you.
Don't give them no money.
I got you.
Don't give them no money, don't give them no land, no nothing. Cincinnati Gardens sitting out there big as day. Open it up, renovate it, soccer. Spring Grove, where the old Conns building is, it's just sitting there, all that land. You have plenty of land, plenty of parking, whatever, soccer. Leave TAF, whatever, alone. They keep talking about the storage, okay, build some storage. You got a storage issue at the current stadium? Build some storage then around there, leave us alone. We cool where we at. We don't want that down there anyway. There's too much traffic running through there. You talked about all that, all that drink, you know they're gonna be doing all that, come on now. That's a residential area, that's, we don't want it, basically, we don't want it, y'all. Please, don't. Next time they knock, don't open it, don't answer it. It ain't good, we don't want it. I voted, I got a hand in voting for some of y'all. We don't want it. I put y'all up there for a reason. They put y'all up here for a reason. My kids are currently in Cincinnati Public School. My children's education is in y'all hands. I'm trusting y'all, with them, tell them, go ahead. Tell them, go ahead, we don't want it. Let's explain it simple. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having us tonight. Tom Savaca, current resident of the Finley Market area and someone who has an active half-a-million-dollar project going on on Clark Street in the West End. I wanna just kinda bring it back to some CPS issues here, particularly your family and civic engagement plan. One of your stated goals is to continue to strengthen family and civic involvement in school-based decisions and develop schools as community learning centers that serve as hubs to their surrounding communities. You've stated that you will continue to develop neighborhood-by-neighborhood community engagement, understanding the community needs, and developing co-located partners chosen by the community that provide academic excellence and academic excellence, and meet the community's needs, providing recreational, educational, social, health, civic, and cultural opportunities to students, their families, and the community. I just wanna point it out that these people tonight have offered you all an opportunity for those educational, civic, and cultural needs, as stated in your goals. Secondly, I know early on in his presentation, Jeff stated that this is the world's most popular sport, that is, in fact, true in the world, perhaps not in the United States, but nonetheless, an equally impactful opportunity for cultural relevance for your students. And then finally, as someone who has an architectural design background, I know these gentlemen are pulling their hair out over here, hearing about a parking garage that will cover the entire West End. It is much easier to build a parking garage up than it is to build a 100-acre parking garage over an entire neighborhood. And there are plenty of opportunities to do that under a new site, or in, for example, the CET garage area. All of this to say, to try and make it relevant to you all, there are architectural solutions here that will build into the security and safety concerns for your students. As was stated, let's make this an opportunity to be a good story, and I trust that you all will take care of that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Brown. To the Board members, to every last one of our esteemed people that are here in the building, I need to say to you, if it smells like a rat, that's what it is. See, I stand here as an alumni, class of 1966, Robert A. Taff graduate. I stand here as a member of the LSDMC, LSAC before then, for those who don't know. So I was here when they, we went for the first stadium for TAF to get it built. I was one of them, if you check back in your records, that signed off on it. I was here, I served as president, chairperson of the LSDMC for over 10 years for TAF. I was here when we fought to keep TAF High School open, when they were trying to get rid of it. That's why we have, when they wanted to put automotive diesel and cosmetology in, we fought to get information and technology in there. What I need to say right now is, it's mighty funny. We heard nothing about this until January, the middle of January, and this was after they were, they didn't get in the first section of being part of the Major League Soccer. Now, why is it it comes to us at the last minute? We should be in on the first of, it's not a big secret. We're not concerned about the small print, 'cause everything that's printed is not what comes out, 'cause there's a back portion of it. What we need is for you to be transparent. This is about, I'm not concerned about buildings that are made of bricks and stones. I'm concerned about the ones that are made of flesh and blood. That's their children. And it doesn't mean, and I came from the West End, originally 946 Clinton, which most of them don't know about. But what I'm saying right now is, whether we're still in the West End or not, we're in the West End. And see, them is all my babies. If you mess with my babies, you gotta mess with me. So I'm saying this to everyone, we need to think clearly about this. If this was so great, why wasn't it brought out in the opening from the beginning? Anything that kept in the dark is something wrong with it, and secrets always do come out. Everything comes to the light. All darkness, there's a light for it eventually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Marlena Brookfield. I am a CPS proud graduate of Western Hills High School and current CPS parent, have a student at Dater High School. My biggest question regarding FC Cincinnati in the West End and all this talk about opportunity, job creation, businesses, for whom? For whom? Because I see neighborhood revitalization in different parts of town. You know, you talked about Clifton, where they are currently playing. I went to UC, I saw what was done up there and the things that are still happening up there. What are your metrics for affordable housing? You're putting in all these apartment units, $1,000 a month? What college student has $1,000 a month? So who is this for? And how does that coincide with the district's equity policy and the vision that we have for equitable education and access to all of our students, all of our stakeholders? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Scrogan, and I am a parent of a child that goes to Schroeder High School, who utilizes the field. And I wasn't gonna come and talk after I heard everybody else talk, but somebody that I think that you're really leaving out are the students. I think, when I look at this, I think this would be a great link project. I said, "I think they should be at the meeting, invite them, they can't stay for three hours 'cause they have homework, but invite some of them to talk about this and find out what is the pros and cons of all of this." So I'm here because I want what's best for our kids, and maybe they can help figure that out.
Thank you. Our next, our next group of five, David Brenner, Joe Mallory, Cantina Davis, Paul Boganschutz, Michelle Dillingham.
Good evening, thank you for giving me time. I think we can all agree that economic development is good for Cincinnati. We can also agree that we need to support our schools, our students, and our community. There needs to be a balance between those two goals. Over the years, there have been many development deals and via tax abatements, some have resulted in cheating our schools out of money to support our students. The FCC deal is just the last in a long line of developments, and let's not this be, let's not let this be one that does more harm than good when it comes to our schools. It's not just tax breaks coming, but the newest plan looks to take facilities away from our students. We've had many articulate speakers this evening with a lot of passion. I'm not gonna talk about the West End. Let's talk about school funding and the impact to the taxpayers of our entire district. It's more than just the city. As you're aware, the funding model for our schools is based on property values. We can debate on whether property taxes are the right thing or the wrong thing, we just need to deal with that as a reality. When properties are undervalued, appropriate taxes are not paid, and it's our schools and ultimately our students that suffer. As a result, the burden of the taxes goes to the rest of the property owners that are already paying their share of taxes. Is it fair to push the cost of- Is it fair to push the cost of economic development onto those that do not get tax abatements? There's a breaking point somewhere. Will we continue this approach until a levy fails? In order to secure their tax abatement, developers regularly work with CPS to build in side payments to make the district whole. This is a great idea, but in practice, it's not working. In the October Finance Committee meeting, Ms. Wagner reported that they have found at least fourteen agreements that are not being paid. These fourteen alone resulted in over six hundred thousand dollars not being paid to the district. There are so many things wrong with this, three minutes isn't even enough to touch it. However, I would like to recognize Ms. Wagner for identifying the issue and Board Member Bolton for consistently pushing back on recent deals and calling out the need for more meaningful collaboration with the city. As a community, we must work with the city and developers to come up with solutions that balance the needs of economic development with the needs of our students. We respect all property owners in the district. This district, this district is going back to the voters multiple times over the next few years for renewals. What happens to our district and our students if even one of these fail? It is incumbent on this board to take a stand and ensure that the needs of our students are being adequately represented. There needs to be a fair agreement with the city and developers. The future of our city depends on this. You have the power, as elected officials, representatives of the citizens of this city, you make decisions that are in the best interest of our students. You must make the right decision for our students.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Mallory. I wanna give a disclaimer first. I am not representing the NAACP today. Mr. Birding mentioned that he had a conversation, you know, wants to see if he can get to where they meet with the NAACP. And we did meet with him, and I'm a skeptic, and I told him that, because I said from the beginning, they were very lacking with their engagement, and it was the worst model of community engagement that they could have used. And they had practice by going to Oakley. They had practice. And they still got it wrong. I'm a skeptic because the constantly changing narrative. You know, here's a few facts they roll out. They talk to the residents, and we've heard this before. We've had broken promises. We had Hope Six that decimated the community. And 1998, 1999, they tore down Lincoln Courts in Laurel Homes, displaced everyone, promised them to come back, broken promises. I talked to Mr. Birding about the stadium deal. I was on the opposite side of that as well, because it was regressive, it was a sales tax, it was gonna hurt people that couldn't afford a ticket to go into that stadium. So I was against it. I talked to him about, um, whether or not there was gonna be affordable housing. Lo and behold, now they're talking about affordable housing. Affordable for who? Because, uh, I think CMHA did it as a service to the community by giving away the land that was meant for affordable housing. He mentioned that, um, one of the major league community. I've heard those words before. I heard it back when we had the stadium deal. The slogan was, the tagline was, "A Major League City." So they just recycled the term. Yes, I'm a skeptic, because this is the second phase of the further decimation of a community that's historically black. I grew up down there, blood, sweat, and tears on those streets. People say I shouldn't be down there, 'cause I don't live down there now. I'm gonna have a say-so, because the West End Community Council has people representing the West End community, don't even live in the community. So I have a problem with that. Broken promises. We talk about transparency. I'm not confident that they've been totally transparent. Trust. That was a word I told Jeff. The reason why I can't get to hear is 'cause there's no trust. It's like I've had this bad dream, and I'm reliving it again. Okay? We talk about transparency. There are some who were elected to office who received contributions for their campaigns from the very people who own, own the stadium, and they want you to vote to let them have their MLS franchise. I have a problem with that. So why am I a skeptic? I haven't seen the truth all the way yet. There's a truth somewhere in there, but the devil's in the details. And they keep using invisible ink.
Good evening. I'm Paul Bogan Schutz, and I'm a resident of the area that's being looked at for the stadium, fifty yards away. I come here, I wanted to speak to you, because I say, I look, one of the things that you guys mentioned a couple times was the tax revenue and the abatement. I'm not sure if you're aware that the property surrounding that area is getting ready to come online for taxes in the next two to three years, which just in the immediate community would be somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollars that would be bring on, um, that would help offset whatever's given to the stadium. That area, I've been there for twelve years. It needs something. It needs a boost, and this is gonna give it a boost. There is, you are never, we are never going to get our facilities down there unless we have something like this that is shifting the area and making it better for everyone. I can tell you from a company that I work at north of here, the analytics don't support bringing businesses into the, where the West End. This gives us a fighting chance for that. I ask that you consider that in your decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cantina Davis, and all I can say is nobody should follow that. Because I've been here twenty-five years, in the West End, over twenty-two years. And I don't think everybody is even considering children that have the right to a path that they're used to, that they feel safe on, that y'all want to interrupt for a building. Why? Babies have enough that they dealing with. They don't need any more coming from FCC. They get it enough when they go to school. They get enough. I'm gonna touch on five little things, and then I'm gonna get out y'all way. Um, I'm, I don't wanna echo what has been heard, but the area has already been impacted by Hope Six. Why do we have to go through that again? If we collectively say no, why is that not enough? Why is no not enough? Why expect the residents to roll over just 'cause you wanna make money in Cincinnati? Residents, we have, we don't have a lot of money, but we have some money. We're contributing to our neighborhood. And I keep hearing everybody talk about us buying into the growth of Cincinnati. In case y'all didn't know, we bought into that idea when we moved into the West End. We bought into the West End. We don't need anybody to tell us to buy into something we already bought into. That's why our babies are still there. That's why they still go to the same schools that we went to when we were in school. And lastly, no, my next one is, um, we don't want the West End to look like over the ride. I don't know how many of y'all go through there, but when I lived there, it was predominantly black. Now, when I go to Quoeger, people look at me like I'm crazy. Like, what are you doing over here? I've been here. Where you been? I've been here. And I need to pay homage to a lady that taught me so much from the Housing Authority, by the name of Jackie Davis. And Jackie Davis said to me, as a dream maker, and if you know what that is, she made us dream. She made us want more for ourselves. She made us give ourselves a voice. But one of the things Jackie said was, "You never let somebody make a decision for you, about you, without you." As a resident in the West End and the Vice President of Liberty Street Council, Liberty Street is my home. I already made it that.
Ms. Dillingham?
As you can tell, I'm not Ms. Dillingham, so I'm taking her spot.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay. My name's Alexis Kidd, and I spoke for you all the last time that we had the conversation. And I just kinda wanna remind you all of the things that we talked about. You all are the gatekeepers for the community.
Ms. Kidd, are you signed up?
No, I was speaking, I was told I could take the spot for Ms. Dillingham.
Oh, okay. I didn't, we didn't know that. I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you. So, like I mentioned before, you all are the gatekeepers of this process right now. Although you're responsible for one serious slice of the pie of our youth, but there's also housing that's needed, there's also jobs that are needed. And if all those pieces of pie do not really come together, it shouldn't make a whole pie. And so we're asking that you all continue to be good gatekeepers, continue to engage with community. I've also been talking to Jeff, actually went through the walk with him on Saturday and heard what he said to residents, heard what residents were concerned about as well. And so part of the thing is to continue engagement, continue talking to residents, and make sure that all facets are taken care of, not just one little piece. There's so much that, if, even if we get some taken care of for youth. Say we got sports for youth, but if those kids do not live there anymore, if those families don't live there anymore, what's the benefit? And so we wanna make sure that there is affordable housing for residents down there, truly affordable for residents that actually live down there. We wanna make sure that jobs, living wages are a possibility, internships for kids. And there's so much that we want as a community, and we need to be an active part of that negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, the next group of five, Douglas Springs, Sarisa Newbill, Stephen Pryor, Mark Casey, Raymond Ellerby.
Y'all ready? Good afternoon. My name is, um, good evening. My name is Sarisa Newbill. My mom right now is a resident in City West Downtown, so that's why I'm here as a concern, um, person, because everything that's happening here is gonna impact and affect her. I do see a few familiar faces who are from the neighborhood, um, who are here advocating for FCC Cincinnati. And I find it pretty, um, disingenuous that they're here, because like Bernie said earlier, they're hired. So that speaks volumes as to why they're here, you know, to petition for getting the stadium here. As far as the person that he had earlier, I forget her name. She came up here with statistics. As far as she's went to a hundred and eighty-six doors downtown to talk to residents and engage residents. Everybody who I know from downtown are against this stadium. So I'm, I'm not sure if they're picking and choosing which homes to go to. But everyone who I speak to are against the stadium. And it's not, it's not because the residents down there are against development. It's because the development that always come to the neighborhood, it never includes them. That's why they're against it. It never, it's never inclusive. So it's not, you know, I, I hear a lot of people here phrase it, you know, you should be open to development. And I think a lot of people with sound minds are open to development, if it includes them, if their families benefit from that development. But we've seen over and over again, people who, who are black and brown, we don't get those, we don't reap the benefits from that development. So I ask you to listen to the community outside of everybody's concern, people who, 'cause there's a lot of people here who have been paid off, to be quite honest. And their voices are, it's quite frank, quite frankly, it's irrelevant. The only voices that should be heard here are the residents, period, point blank. And, and, a lot of you here that are elected, you know, as the school board, you need to take heed to what the residents are saying, because they elected you to sit in your seats. And there is an election coming up. If, if, if they feel like you don't vote to their, you know, to their favor, they can voice their opinions in the election box. And I, I ask that everybody in this room do that if they go ahead and decide to go with big business and corporations over people's wellbeings and livelihoods. That's all I got.
Douglas Springs, Stephen Pryor.
How y'all doing? My name's Stefan. I'm one of the realists here, just with the school board. Let's talk about bully. FCC being bullies. They taking property, genification, without education. That's what they doing. The bullies. Messenger, you know I'm gonna talk about you. We went to his house. He got a house in North Avondale, looked so nice. He went down to Florida. We don't know if he went down to the construction thing down at FCC Miami, but he left us at his beautiful three-million-dollar home. So make that right decision. That's a nice house. Make the right decision now. Well, I'm the guy that went out to the community. I went door-to-door. Like I helped y'all get elected. I went the door-to-door to get the residents' signatures. Right here, three hundred and thirty, face-to-face. That lady they had up here, that was a lie. She ain't go no door-to-door, 'cause when I came along, they ran off. I seen Birdy. He was out. I love you, Birdy. I do. He was out, but he spoke the truth at the end. He did. He said, "Somebody in your, in your circle, Kelly, asked me to get them some money. We'll make this all go away." Yeah, he said that. He did. He, he said, I got you on tape. He said, he said, "Somebody in Kelly's circle asked to pay them. We can help you make this go away." We gotta stop this, y'all. It sound like a Judas move. When Judas kissed J, uh, Jesus on the cheek and took the money. We gotta stop that, y'all. We playing games with each other's lives over money. We gotta stop that, for real. I'm, I'm dead upstairs, y'all. Y'all looking at me like, "Is he serious?" Yes, I am. It's the truth what they doing. Push you out. Go to Newport. Go, go, go to, uh, Cincinnati Gardens. You got a lot of places to go. Go to Paul Brown Stadium. Matter of fact, talk to US Bank Arena about helping them redevelop that, make them to a soccer field. Come on, Birdy.
Mr. Pryor, could you talk to us?
Oh, my fault. My bad. I like to talk to everybody, sisters. I'm happy, baby. Yes, I am. But, but when he was showing y'all the diagrams of the stadium, he didn't, he should've had a laser to point up there and say, "This where the parking gonna be at." He ain't do that. 'Cause it's gonna be in a neighborhood that soccer field is bigger than a football stadium. Hope I'm right. You can Google if it ain't. But, but he said he got twenty-two thousand fans. Do the twenty-two thousand fans know genification? We gotta wake up, y'all. Sisters and brothers over here, we gotta wake up, y'all. We keep playing each other over and over for money. Give it back. Get the money back, man. Y'all can be like Judases. If it's named Judas, y'all have a baby, name it Judas. We're tired of the lies. They got a lion club over in Newport, a lion bar.
Thank you.
Make the noise, y'all.
Mark? Mark Casey?
Uh, hello. Yeah, I'm Mark Casey. Thank you for letting me voice, uh, my concern. Uh, I even, I know we can't speak directly to him, but I wanna thank Jeff. I got a headache, so I, I, I couldn't only imagine what everybody experiencing. But I, I only wanted to say that I, uh, my name, I'm twenty-five years old, been in the West End since I was nineteen. It was my first apartment. I live in Park Town. Uh, got married a few years ago, uh, and like, so my wife, my son, we're there. And, uh, we, we don't wanna leave. Like, I love the West End, and, uh, specifically, I love the history of it. I just went to the Bon Hill Library. They had, like, this event for Black History Month, and they just went through, um, black Cincinnadians, like, who contributed to it seventeen hundreds, eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred. Like, just, I, I wish I can just read the list of men, and I, it's just, so I just, I, I tend to be against this, because I feel like, uh, something as strong as FCC could push all of that history out, and, uh, that we won't really have a place for it. Um, so I, I don't know. My fear is, just as me, 'cause I'm speaking as me, my fear is that it's too late. So if that's true, I would seriously want Mr. Jeff to consider, uh, the community, uh, benefit agreement. And to, and to really, I don't wanna throw out the ideas, but I mean, I'm just regal, like, all of it. Like, I want you to consider, 'cause I, we keep talking about the kids, but like, the board, I mean, you're really making a decision that's gonna affect the entire community. And, um, so I just, please, like, take that to account, 'cause I'm scared. Like, I really, I just wanna stand up here and say, "No." No, but I'm really scared that some of you may have made up your mind already. So I'm, that's just me. That's not, so I just, if, if you have, I wanna say to you, and if, Mr. Jeff, if you're listening, consider that thing. Like, consider that thing. Get with some people that can tell you about the history. Um, yeah, I, I, I would love that. Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond Ellerby?
Thank you for letting me speak for you today.
Um, I come perhaps against my better judgment as a fan of FC Cincinnati, but first and foremost, I'm a lifelong Cincinnian and a CPS taxpayer. Um, I hope that you will take into consideration everything that's been said here today and make sure that you hold FC Cincinnati to those promises, that, uh, community benefits agreement, um, and especially as a person of color, the inclusiveness clause. I, I want that to be a big part of this deal. I don't want to be embarrassed as a fan, as a Cincinnian, as a taxpayer, to have us eat a poor deal. I want a good one. And like the person before me just said, if this is too late and this is going to happen, I want us to meet together and work together and do this in a way that's going to be mutually beneficial for the community and first the children. The presentation that I've seen looks like a great deal for the students, but I'm not educated in, uh, making the decisions for the school. You as the board are, and me coming here, uh, in this meeting, uh, my purpose is to ensure that, you know, you're paying attention to the, what you're hearing, especially insofar as the, the concerns of the students. And, you know, I, I, I believe again as a taxpayer that this is something that can be workable, but of course, we need to listen to the community. I hope Jeff is taking copious notes because there are a lot of concerns that need to be met. And, uh, multiple people have voiced their, uh, wishes for this to be as transparent as possible. Is there something where you could put up on your website as this goes along, the, the, the bullet points that you've hit? He's made these promises, here's where you are with them. So we can see every step of the way, if we're not to, able to attend these meetings regularly, that we see what's going on. So it's cut and dry, it's bullet point by bullet point, and nobody has to argue about what they thought they might have heard. It's right out there for everyone. So I just ask you to consider, if we're, if we're going to do this, do it in the best way possible, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next, the next group of five, Kevin Wallace, John Donaldson, Jeff Capel, Caple, Joyce Gibson, Ralph Moon.
Yeah, hi. Uh, I wanted to say thank you again for making this opportunity available to the public to make a comment here. Uh, my name's Kevin Wallace. Uh, Cincinnati public taxpayer, um, all that fun stuff, work at a local museum, uh, schedule a lot of field trips with Cincinnati Public. Um, very, very happy, uh, to be a supporter of Cincinnati Public. Um, I wanted to make sure that this deal that Cincinnati Public may be going into, uh, is a good one. And based on the presentation that we saw from FC Cincinnati, it sounds good. Uh, everything seems to be what we would want. I mean, we've got a private entity looking to invest money into our private schools, or into our public schools. How many times do we get an investor willing to rebuild infrastructure, uh, like this? This isn't a normal opportunity, I would guess. Maybe this happens all the time, but I would suspect that this is fairly unusual. Um, and I think this puts Cincinnati Public in a very, very special position where they get to dictate, you all get to dictate, how this development might move forward with a community benefits agreement. Uh, things like diversity, inclusion, uh, housing, things, uh, that may come up with the stadium. These are things that can be built into this community benefits agreement. And if there is going to be a deal made, this seems like a fantastic opportunity for our educators who are incredibly knowledgeable on the history of gentrification, the history of, uh, community being destroyed in other parts of the country, in our city, in this very neighborhood that we're talking about. And we have the ability to undo those mistakes or to prevent those mistakes from being happen, uh, from happening again. And I really, really, really think it's key that our educators and the leaders of the education world take a leading role in this in drafting this community benefits agreement to make this happen. Um, I also would like to say thank you guys, uh, for standing up here and taking the brunt of, uh, public comment that I feel like would be normally directed to, uh, the city council. Uh, we've seen a couple of politicians come up here and speak to you guys. I'm curious of how many of them have proposed rent control? How many of them have proposed giving renters ownership of the properties that they've been renting for decades? Uh, actual solutions to gentrification? Actual solutions to, uh, poverty in communities? We don't seem to hear them actually giving proposals, just, you know, taking the anger of a community and using it as a weapon against their political foes, which is clever, but not very helpful to the community. So I wanted to say thank you guys for taking the brunt of that, uh, the public comment. And I really, really, really hope you guys use that community benefits agreement as the ability to shape this development. Let our educators use their education and build this forward. There's no reason to repeat the mistakes of the past. This looks like a fantastic opportunity. I'd be curious if City Rama offered you guys a community benefits agreement about what could happen there when they were going to put half million dollar houses or are going to put half million dollar houses in the neighborhood? I'm curious of how many of our politicians took up the opportunity to speak out against that. Uh, I'm curious of how many of our politicians, uh, do that. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. John, John Donaldson. Mr. Donaldson. Jeff Caple.
Good evening, and my congratulations to the newly elected school board members. As a newly elected official myself, I understand what it's like to get sworn into office and then immediately thrown into the line of fire. And I find this side of the podium to be a whole lot more comfortable. I'm chairman of no more stadium taxes. We're against stadium taxes and subsidies to include the property tax exemptions that unfortunately are following these stadiums nationwide. I applaud the Cincinnati School Board for being proactive about making sure you get... Thank you. I applaud the school board for being proactive about making sure you get the property taxes that you should be getting for a facility of $200 million. I encourage you to team up with the county commissioners and Cincinnati City Council on this issue. If all three governments take a united stand, that any stadium deal is contingent on a legally binding agreement with FC Cincinnati, ensuring that everybody gets 100% of their property taxes, you have a much better chance of everybody getting what they want. There are two major threats that make such an agreement necessary. Number one, if the Port Authority is looped back into this, then since the Port Authority is a government agency and governments typically don't pay taxes, that could be a serious threat to you. And also a state exemption. Uh, if you follow the nationwide arena exemption that happened a year or so ago, what happened, I mean, there's no public debate on this. What they do is they find a lackey legislator who will slide a property tax exemption into a bill at 11:59 PM the day before that, that legislation is due to pass the next day. Uh, so that's what happened with Nationwide Arena. A couple of months ago at city council, when Mr. Birding was asked, "Are you guys seeking a property tax exemption?" That's, that's a pretty simple yes/no question. The answer was, "We're not sure." I guess there was a, maybe we're on the, on the verge of some clarification tonight, but more needs to be followed up on that. And that's just speaking on my own behalf. I hope that you look out strongly for the interest of West End residents. That neighborhood has often been ignored for the most part until somebody wants their land or something else. And it's been entirely too predictable and unfortunate that a lot of affluent people recently have been telling West End residents that they ought to pipe down on this issue and not be passing out flyers and raising their, their voices. You know what? Uh, I, in the name of equality, I'd be interested in seeing FC Cincinnati stadium plans for Hyde Park and Indian Hill. I'm sure that the residents there would have nothing to say if their neighborhood was on the verge of getting ripped up. So finally, uh, I would urge you, get everything in writing. If it's not an illegally binding agreement, it doesn't exist, and we know that. From the 1996 stadium tax campaign, which was managed by Mr. Birding, they promised us huge piles of gold. Instead, we got some huge piles of crap. We're often told about the economic benefits that these stadiums often bring. Professional economists have studied this for over 30 years and have, have conclusively shown stadiums do not lead to net new economic development or net new jobs. So look, if these guys like a new soccer stadium, say so, but it's not economic development. Thanks a lot.
Joyce Gibson. Joyce Gibson. Ralph Moon.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, board members, and everyone here, uh, that's concerned. I was born at, uh, 840 York Street. Later, we moved to 939 York Street. And then 1115 Dayton Street. I'm a '66 graduate of Robert A. Tabt High School. And I own 1115 Dayton Street. And for all you land grabbers, you'll never get that. The second thing I'd like to say is I've seen this punk dog and pony show all my life. I've seen Expressway run through the neighborhood under the pretense of communist insurgents. Y'all know what I'm talking about. They're not for domestic transportation, they're military roads. The second thing is, people were not only displaced, but there was nothing that they got. I remember when no black people lived in Avondale. And I also know when no black people didn't live, are you ready? Price Hill because they didn't want you there. Now let's get, let's, let's get real here. This whole stadium thing, Mr. Birding, I just don't know how that you could possibly compensate the people behind you for three or 400 years of degradation and poverty.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Can we ask that you address the board?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm humbly sorry, ma'am. I'm also standing here because last year, myself and several other people created the Robert A. Tabt High School Educational Foundation, a 501(c)(3) legitimate entity. We have already met with your superintendent, and we already met with the gentleman back here named Mr. Leschner, who in fact is the executive director of the ABC Foundation. Well, what's ABC? That's the foundation that all athletics got to outsource to. So when your kids are playing at Tabt High School, the school gets nothing out of it. The last time I went to a game and they called a starting lineup, only one boy on the team lived in the neighborhood. What about the heritage of the ball players that Tabt put into prof- we put five men in professional football in six years. They all started under Will Stargill. And now you're talking about moving the stadium. And my final comment is, where you want to place the stadium, it would seem to me, why wouldn't you build it where you want to give the residents the other stadium unless you got intentions of the school not being there any further?
Mr. Moon, we thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, our next group of five, Shirley Felton, Christopher Griffin, Christopher Nels, Brian Gary, Carlos O'Neal. Shirley Felton.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Felton. And my family was one of the first families gentrified out of the West End in 1954. They didn't put us back into the neighborhood. They sent us all the way over to the Rhine to a place we called Mount Auburn, but it really was, um, uptown. And, uh, when I got older, I did come back to the West End, but I left because I wanted to do some different things though. But I'm saying, we must remember who we are, where we are, where we came from, and where we want to go. Don't take no wooden knuckles. Keep your nose clean, and especially, don't cut it off to spite your face.
That's right.
Now, these guys, I don't believe they really want this stadium here. I think it's about high-end housing. Now, I was gentrified again in 2010 out of Walden Hills because we were in the flying pig, you know, zone. So we got moved out of there. And then I was a part of what some people told me that was going to help them to build more low-income housing. It was just a few little old ladies, because I'm a little old lady. And, uh, we got a lot of congressmen's names and senators' names, and we had to call them up and tell them that we was for them to build more low-income housing. And what did we do? We killed low-income housing because they got rid of low-income housing and came up with affordable housing. You know, they fooled us into thinking that we was going to help get low-income housing built, and they want high-income housing. That's what they're going to do down there. That is all about them getting that land down there and building high-income housing. These folks are from New York. They the ones that made New York, you know, such a difference between the income there and the rent and all this stuff. Very high, very low. What's going on there now? It's rat city. And that's exactly what they're going to do with us down here. All they do is come for the money. They don't care nothing about the people. You know, and that's what he did with us with that doggone stadium deal. I'm, I'm telling you, I, I, if I had four legs, I'd kick his booty with all of them. I'm gonna tell you. The way that they made us responsible for everything they want to do. And I think this is what they, they need a stadium that's already built. Because they, if they build one, then I don't think that they could, I think they want to pull in, uh, Paul Brown Stadium some kind of way. Pull it to a point where they could make us responsible for FC if they get down there. We don't need this. You don't need, it's the emperor and his clothes. He's naked.
Thank you, ma'am. Christopher Griffin.
How y'all doing, board? Um, I'm gonna start off today with a quote. Um, "We can't be afraid of change. You may very be, be, feel, feel secure in a pond that you are in, but you, but if you never venture out, you will never know that there's such a thing as an ocean or a sea. Holding on to something that's good for you now may be the very reason why we don't have anything better." And I'm speaking to the board, but I'm also speaking to my residents behind us. When the last time y'all looked at Tabt graduation rates? When the last time any investment was brought into our community? Y'all can't tell me because y'all don't know. It, it, it ain't happened. So I'm saying that today is, um, what do we get out of saying no today? What changes? Is Tabt gonna be a better school? And I'm not saying this to try to sway anybody, vote to think about, you know, support FC. I'm just trying, think about taking emotion out of everything that you, that, that we've been through. I mean, I know it's hard. Um, I speak out of emotion myself, but I just want to know, like, what would change? Have y'all seen Tabt grays? It's still a failing school if we say no? We have an opportunity to just stay engaged with them, even if it don't bring a stadium here. If we don't get a stadium. Let's stay engaged as a community. I want everybody to come out to the West End Community Council meeting so we know what's going on. You know, I want everybody to, you know, try to build something in, in the West End, not just Cincinnati, but in the West End. Because right now, it's nothing there. I don't mean to say pull ourselves up by the bootstraps, but we have to invest in ourself. Not only Jeff. Not only whoever. We got to invest in ourself. And like I said, if we say no today without listening, without staying engaged, we have nothing. We have nothing in the West End. So that's all I'm saying, just stay engaged. We have to try to take emotions out of it. I'm one of the person who's speaking. I'm one of the person who speak out of emotion. I'm speaking out of emotion now. But I do know that we need something in, in the West End. If it's not a stadium, it's, it's something. So all I'm just asking is all our residents just stay engaged. Please just listen. Keep an open ear. Everybody know about hope sixing, about being displaced. I've lived through it. Everybody lived through it. But let's just stay engaged in this community. Let's all come out every time it's something like this. Let's come out when Dree's talking about building two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar houses. The medium Midwest End is seventeen thousand dollars a year. Nobody came out for that. Let's come out for everything.
Thank you. Okay.
So I guess the first thing I wanna say is I am a fan of FCC, and I support FCC. But I love and support the people of the West End more. I'm proud of my work beside, standing beside Shirley Menefield of Park Town, Shirley Colbert of the Laurel Homes. And I wanna ask you, where was your care a year ago, if you do care about the people of the West End? Where was your care five years ago?
Gary, did you address--
And ten years ago? I, I can talk to whomever I wanna talk to.
No, not here. Mr. Gary, we're asking you, we're asking you to direct your comments to the board out of respect.
I will, I will. How much money has the school board members that are present received from the lenders and from Centas? Okay? I'll direct the questions to you then. Ms. Vice President, how much money did you receive from the owners of the FC for your campaign?
We, we're not going--
I will direct another question--
We're not going to respond to questions.
To Mr. Morosky. I'll direct the question to every individual up here. How much money did you guys receive from your, for your campaigns, from the owners of the FC, from Scott Farmer, from the lenders, and other people who are members of the FC? Okay. So, "He who pays the piper calls the tune." If they're paying for community engagement, what's gonna be the outcome of the community engagement? We already know. The fix is in. I saw you parade up and have a dog and pony show with the young man that says his name is Mr. Steve. Mr. Steve, what is the race or the color of the person who is the owner of the company that you work for, the architectural company? What race are they? Michael Schuster is white, okay? It's not a black architectural firm. Just to be clear, the West End has been under attack for thirty years. Thirty years, from education to, to businesses, to, to the residents. And I'm saying, if you got the fifty million, give the fifty million to the West End. The lenders have enough money to alleviate poverty in the West End permanently. So I'm saying, the last point is, when you say you're gonna make affordable housing, the average income in the West End is fifteen thousand dollars per year. That's seven dollars and fifty cents an hour. Are you creating housing, homeownership opportunities for people making seven dollars and fifty cents an hour? I don't wanna repeat what everybody else said, so. Though the young brother was right, there's been no investment in the West End. And why has there been no investment in the West End?
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
And Jeff Birding was on council during this time.
Thank you.
They could've invested in the West End.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon. Hi, Ms. Dansby. I'm basically here, I represent West End, period. I've been down there, grew up, sixty years. Went from elementary to every school in the neighborhood. I, I believe for Tabt to finally get a stadium that supports and says that, you know, they finally give us some recognition from somebody that grew up in the neighborhood, that can expand on his own history of how he was treated coming up. He didn't get those opportunities to play pro, even though he should've. But now that he, they finally gave him some recognition, they wanna take it away. They say they wanna make it bigger. If you look at those plans, as they say, that stadium is three times bigger than what it is, so it's got to take at least three times that much parking, which means it has to go into the West End area. I don't understand with all the money they have, why they don't relocate it in their own community? Why Spring Grove Con's area, where it's no residential area, nobody living there? They say they want it in an urban community. Well, whatever community you put it in, if those peoples want to attend, they will attend. They don't care where it's at. Y'all are not investing money in, in the West End people, as they say, as everybody has, you know, said over and over again. 'Cause y'all could've been did that. They could've been gave money to the Cincinnati Public Schools to help build the community, to build the school. They made some changes at Tabt, but if you look at some other schools, they made three times as much. So as y'all, like you say, elected officials, you know, I feel like, you know, y'all just, you know, respect what the community wants, and we don't want it in the community. And I'm asking for, you know, y'all to, you know, at least appreciate and give thought to how much it takes from a community to displace everyone that lives there. And for all of those that you've heard that has been placed, and I'm still down there. I live in Park Town. I've been down there twenty years. I've been on the board, and if it's one thing, our main goal is, is to never sell. Don't ever sell out, because it's the only cooperative in the whole city. We still have low-income housing. We have affordable rent. And if they build around it, they, if they don't have the same rent we have, it's not affordable. Not in our community. Thank you for your time.
So, our last public speaker tonight is Julie Sellers, who is the president of CFT. And I'm gonna ask Julie to come down, but I did, just like we did last time, last board meeting, we have several people that expressed that they wanted to have their voice heard, but they weren't able to meet, to come tonight. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to read these short letters. From Jared McFadden. Dear President Jones, Vice President Copeland-Dansby, and Board Members, I have been reading and hearing a lot about the FC Cincinnati Stadium located in the West End. As an eleven-years resident and homeowner of the West End, I fully support the FC Cincinnati Stadium located in my neighborhood where I live. Over the last eleven years, I have served on the Betts Longworth Historical Group and attended many of the West End Community Council meetings, and we have discussed incessantly about how to bring change, improvements, business, and real development to our neighborhood. I believe that the FC Stadium and City Rama two thousand and eighteen could be the spark that starts the change we have been hoping for. Please don't let the loud voices of the few drown out the quiet majority and from making the right choices for the West End. I also know many of my neighbors here in the West End fully support the FC Stadium, City Rama, and more development to come. Letter number one. Letter number two. To the members of Cincinnati Public School Board, I cannot make it tonight's meeting, but I am writing to express my support for a soccer stadium in the CPS district. It would not hurt children in the CPS system to have a soccer stadium built here. I find objections to tax credits for such a project to be unfounded, especially as many, as any development in the West End would require the same sorts of tax credits. And I can conceive of very few that would have the best interests of the neighborhood and the city as a whole more than this one does. I have lived and voted in the city of Cincinnati for thirty years, and I know that the continued challenges faced by CPS have much more to do with helping, helping the families of CPS students than they do more school taxes. I support initiatives to help families with parenting, family emergencies, family problems, health and mental health issues, and other problems that face all CPS families, but especially minority families and families headed by only one adult. Last one, very short one. I am dropping you a note to tell you that I fully support a CPS and FCC partnership to build a stadium in the West End. I am a school dad who put two children through CPS, and I still live in the city. I think you cannot go wrong entering into a partnership agreement with our new soccer club, FCC, and its ownership team, which includes Mr. Linder. Partnering with a philanthropist like him will allow a great bill, a great bit of development, and I am sure it will be of great benefit to your students, your facilities, and also to the team and the city. I hope you can both work out an agreement that is a win-win. Thanks. Good luck with your meeting. And then finally, our CFT president, who by the way, I just wanted to mention, is exempt from the three-minute time limit.
Thank you. I am gonna keep this quick because we have been here for a long time, and you still have a full meeting to still continue with. But I would like to just say good evening, and I would just like to remind all the school board members is, as Cincinnati moves forward with deciding about a location for the possibility of an FC Cincinnati Stadium, CFT would like to make several recommendations. First, FC Cincinnati Mayor Cranley, Cincinnati City Council, and CPS school board members must move forward in a transparent manner with all stakeholders and taxpayers in the CPS district concerning all agreements impacting the funding of CPS. Two, CFT wants to make sure that CPS and the city hold strong so that FC Cincinnati pays their fair share of taxes to CPS and does no harm to the district. For every corporate property tax deal that the city enters with developers, the average tax-paying homeowner must pick up the shortage by paying more taxes. This is unfair to the taxpayers of Cincinnati if they don't pay their fair share. Three, I have probably worked on as many or more CPS levies than anyone else in the room, and it really does worry me if we go into an agreement that could put future levies at risk. That includes the money that is going currently with this Cincinnati preschool promise. It is the board's responsibility to provide necessary funds for schools to operate. You need to ask yourselves, what will be the role of the Port Authority in regards to the property taxes and/or abatement for FCC? I did read the agreement that was released in, at the end of November, and it seemed as if the Port Authority will have ownership, which means they will be exempt from property tax. So any houses torn down, we will lose taxes on. If that property is not built on across the street, we will lose taxes. So we need to think, right now in Hamilton County, and you can go to Dusty Road site, currently twenty-four-point-eight percent of properties in this county are abated. That's countywide. Probably the majority of those are in the city. And what is the tipping point if we continue to let everybody build and not pay their fair share of taxes? So I am saying that as a property owner and taxpayer in this city for over sixty years, I would like to say, I wanna make sure that the board, the treasurer, the superintendent, the city, all make sure that we are getting our fair share of taxes for whatever deal that comes from this. So thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. This, this concludes the portion of the hearing of the public, and we wanna say as a board that we certainly hear your concerns. And although we've not been able to respond to you, part, the, the intent of this is to allow you and the audience to communicate to us so that we can be informed about what's important to the community. So it, as I stated earlier, we will not be making a vote today. We will be, continue our dialogue with Mr. Birding and FC Cincinnati to be better informed before we make any decisions. We are, we are going to discuss later in the agenda when we get to assignments, we're gonna be discussing our next steps. So you're certainly welcome to stay if you'd like to hear the board's ideas about how we move forward from here. Thank you. So the board will continue with our agenda. Does anyone have any kudos?
Kudos.
Kudos?
I, I have a kudo, and that is to the Walnut Hills High School cheerleading squad who plays second in Nationals.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
They are wonderful, and I did see those pictures and that on, on Facebook. Ms., so, so I wanna give a kudo to the community and thank you all for coming, and I'm also gonna ask you to please respect the rest of our meeting, 'cause we still have work to do. And quite honestly, if you really wanna hear what the board has to say related to next steps, you should probably stay. Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, from our certificated personnel, I want to recognize Susan J. Carey, and from our civil service personnel, Shirley Baldoni, Diane Seifus, Paula King, Gloria Lamb, and Vanessa Ledford. We thank you for your service to our children and wish you well in your new life.
Thank you so much. Ms. Bolton, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. I have one resolution this evening. It's a kind of a perfunctory one that we always must do and need to do. It's a resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation. And I present and hope for passage.
There a second? Second. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
Yes, I do have a very brief report. Just wanted to notify the board that on this past Saturday, we had our teacher fair and career fair, and we had over four hundred applicants show up.
Nice.
We were able to conduct two hundred interviews on the spot. A kudo's to Ms. Worley is that we've had more media coverage than ever for such an event. So this was covered on two news channel as well as WLW radio. So very excited about that. Also like to inform the board that on February the twentieth, we'll begin our high school enrollment. That's always a very exciting time as our students identify the schools they want to go for their high school experience. On February the eighth, AWL had a groundbreaking ceremony for their new health hub, so we're very excited to also be able to bring health services right into our school, into a community. And then last but not least, I'd like to make the board aware that on February the twenty-third at noon, we're going to have a Spencer dedication of their new building. And that will be a pleasure for us to have Marion Spencer there with us, as Donald Spencer and Marion Spencer have done so much for the entire community. So that's my report.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
No, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I wanna congratulate you and your administrative team for the awesome work with the job fair. So that's a conversation that we had four years ago when I first got here. So for me to see that transition the way that it has, it's great. I couldn't be there because I had some community service, but I saw it on two channels. So congratulations. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Ms. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
All right, let's perk up. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
So moved.
Second. Any, any discussion?
I do.
Of course.
Of course I do. I might even limit it just because of the hour. But just a, I'm concerned on page four, Roman numeral five, six, letters B, C, D, and E, the total amount of the then and now for transportation--
Yep.
--is a million dollars. And I know we've all worked really hard about then and now, and-- And I know we've all worked really hard about then and now, and we are demanding certain things of sites and staff. And so again, I'm just registering concern, I don't want an explanation. But it continues to be rather embarrassing to have that in a public document. I have a question for the superintendent and treasurer on Woven Traditions that we all are very supportive of. Those are the folks that have been doing a great job at Pleasant Ridge. Where's this amount of money going, or is this a district-wide purchase for materials?
So Woven Traditions now has a contract with us through our equity initiative. They are working with leadership team once a month as we make lots of decisions down here that can impact how we look at equity. They're also going to be working with their principals and then starting work with schools.
Great, thanks, appreciate that. Another quick, we have on page five also, the auxiliary amount, which is 341,000. Maybe I'll save it for the assignment chair, but we really do need an itemized public list of how much money and how many students we are servicing through auxiliary services because everybody talks about our 35,000 or 36,000, and then they subdivide the amount of money of our total general fund budget and what have you, and say that's how much, when you really are looking at hundreds and thousands of students and multiple sites. And I don't begrudge it, I think it's fine, I want everybody to have what we have. But I think it would be great in the assignment, I will repeat it, that we need a list and we don't just need to produce it when it's a levy year, we all have to be very conscious of it. Final thing for me, is this other one I can raise in student achievement. We have the VIER contract, how much longer is the VIER contract going on? Because I thought as we were centralizing and reorganizing, I thought that that was going to be eventually going away. When's the eventual?
Yeah, so I believe that the VIER contract is scheduled to end at the end of this year. We really did rely heavily on VIER in the absence of a chief communication officer. So to be quite honest with you, we used up a lot of the contract amount of money to fill that hole and gap. And so they weren't able to do the work that we originally paid them to do. So now we've extended it just so they can actually continue the work that we paid them to do.
So that probably then would be ending by June 30th for the next fiscal year. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones.
Okay, so we're going to bring this on home, right? We have some updates and inquiries. One that I'm asked to bring up is about ACES. So we're scheduled for ACES on 2/27/2018 at 2:00 PM, is that correct? Okay. So it appears that we have too many agenda items. And so in an effort to work with Councilman Sittenfield's office, first thing in the morning to settle the agenda, I wanted us to talk through the agenda items and settle on no more than three. We have an hour and a half meeting.
Well, I will say, if I may, transportation is the one that has to come first, largely because that committee's been having hearings in preparation for a sort of metro levy. And they are expecting also to be helpers with us regarding our community dialogue regarding later starts for high schools. So we would definitely need to be able to have that as one of the three, because it's in their timeframe and that's what they're worrying about right now.
And I did read that, so to be clear, you're asking for the city to give the board a presentation related to transportation and sort of?
No, I think what we need to do is we need to catch up with one another as to where they are on the later starts, because we've heard that they are doing some sort of hackathon to help us figure out the problem. And yet I heard also last week, that's not for sure yet. But they will need to hear a presentation from us regarding the amounts of dollars and runs and whatever. I think it's an open dialogue. They have been very involved with the activists for the later starts, as have we. And I think it's, it needs to be a joint effort.
So it's an update, it's an update?
I think that's what it is, an update and an open discussion about that topic.
Are you okay with that, superintendent? Not are you okay, we're on the same page? Okay. Number two, Ms. Morosky.
Well, I got a number two, but also with that, so, and then more clarity on that hackathon. So an update on the hackathon, what our role will be in the hackathon, if anything, which I think should be quite a bit actually, with this late start time issue, so just clarity.
Okay.
But number two, apropos of this evening, I mean, property of something by the 27th, if something's moving forward, we've talked a lot tonight, Mr. Messer especially, about, well, what does that look like? What does that CBA look like? So I think that-
I think that's a good idea.
That would be a time when all 13 of us, or I don't know how many of us are, there's 16 total, to could talk about that together in a public forum.
No, it doesn't happen that way. This is a committee that has three?
It's not all of them?
Jared has six.
Oh!
Six from the city?
Six, six on the committee, and then we don't always have all of our folks able to be there.
Oh, well, we'll be almost 13.
It'll be a lot.
Okay, good. I'm not used to that larger of a group, that's great.
So I think it'd be appropriate.
That is wonderful. So we're putting property specifically related to FC?
Unless there are other things to add to it, but I think the West End and property makes sense apropos of tonight, but if there's other things that I don't know about.
The property and also just maybe they can tell us, as Mr. Messer suggested earlier, about the community benefits agreement?
Process.
How that works. And I think those two things frankly-
Is enough, I agree.
Yes.
I agree. Okay, so we got that? Okay, good. Anything else on ACES? Oh, number two related to ACES, it would probably be beneficial for us to figure out the next dates and times as well as we can as we progress through the year, because there was obviously a lot of conflict around times and dates. And it would be, I think, to our benefit to try to avoid that moving forward.
Can you say something about that?
You can say anything about anything, and I'm going to take a break.
Just with the ACES thing, on our 2018 calendar, all the dates of the ACES meetings are on there. So we do know what those dates are. But I don't know if you talked about this, but the date of February 27th was confirmed at the last board meeting. And I know that's a problem for a couple of people. And so what we might want to do, we have to have a quorum in order to do it, and this is one of those meetings where I believe that we should have all of our board members there if we can. So if we can't do this meeting on the 27th, then it pushes it back to April. Yes, ma'am?
I don't think we can afford to push it back because the transportation and the FC piece are time-sensitive. And it fits within their schedule to be talking about, at least the transportation piece fits within both of our schedules to be talking in terms of the FC. And we don't have to have a quorum because we're not, we don't vote. So I think sometimes we only have three people there, and it works out okay. If we have four, we notice it in case, I think, that if we have it, and then, so it works out real well.
And that's why I said a quorum, because we had four people there, and I was informed that it had to be noticed as a committee meeting. So I'll, I mean, if that's not the case, then we do have enough people.
We've conducted it, which meant we didn't, you know, swear allegiance.
Okay, so how many people are going to be there? Okay.
Maybe 2:30 with a four-year-old.
Yes.
I am.
So that's, we'll move forward with the February 27th date at 2 o'clock. It'll be held here at the, we'll have it in Room 1A. I don't know about the setup here, but in Room 1A, we could probably meet in there. Is that okay?
I think they'll want it streamed, so I don't know if this place is available, maybe we could do it, I don't know.
Okay, we can find out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So that's confirmed. And where are we at the, on the rest of the agenda? Did we do the resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Inquiries and updates.
Assignments, inquiries and updates. We did ACES. Any other inquiries and updates? There wasn't, yes, ma'am, Ms. Bolton?
Perhaps putting, announcing again in public the applications for the parent seat, parent CPS seat for the Cincinnati preschool promise board, that, the date and times that-
Right.
- led to us.
So that would be an assignment to Cheryl Brodnax?
Well, an assignment or just an announcement, inquiry, update, so the public, we've said publicly, want it to do.
Okay, right. So we want to do that now?
Yep.
Ms. Brodnax? Is she over there? Oh, there she is, okay.
Is she squatting?
Okay, you've been there for four hours, it's all right.
So just an announcement that we are seeking a representative to serve on the Cincinnati preschool promise board of managers. We'd be a parent representative. At this time, we'll be accepting applications for those parties that are interested, and they would be due to myself and the early childhood department by February 21st.
Okay, questions? Do board members have questions or comments?
Does the public get the application?
How does the public get application?
We have posted those, we'll have a link on some various sites, but we're also working within a network of various partners and groups that we have to help continue to spread the word among those that we have contact with. And then we have a parent policy council that specifically is for preschool-age students, and we have disseminated that information there as well.
Great. And if board members want to make recommendations, just shoot those to you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other inquiries and updates? Assignments? Ms. Bates?
Yes, I have an assignment. And actually, this has kind of been an assignment with our finance committee, if those of you have been following the work of our finance committee. We've been making inquiries about how to help finance a way to bring more minorities into the teaching profession in our district. And quite frankly, we have been discussing this for a couple of months, and it's really, you know, really not come to any kind of a movement or initiative of any kind. So I, just recently, somebody referred me to this study and I got you all a copy because I realized that I was sending it via email and some people couldn't open it. And it was a study that was conducted by Johns Hopkins, and let me just read you one sentence. It says, "Having at least one black teacher in third through fifth grades reduced black students' probability of dropping out of school by 29%," the study found. "And for very low-income black boys, the results are even greater, their chance of dropping out fell 39%." I also listened to a podcast, it's really very fascinating, about, and I can give you all the link if you're interested, about, you know, the history of why we don't have, you know, African-American teachers. And it goes back to Brown versus Board of Education, it's just something that, who'd have thought, you know? But anyway, what I want to propose as an assignment is that we elevate this, and for lack of a better word, to an initiative. And I have some ideas, and I would like support from the board to continue this, we can continue it through finance, or have a separate initiative. I'd like to talk to the superintendent a little bit more about this. I know that we can engage Mayerson Academy, we also can engage our Cincinnati Federation of Teachers, our governmental affairs liaison, Eric Kearney, is also, you know, the head of the African-American Chamber of Commerce. We have a wealth of individuals who are with us and associated with us that I believe we can do some background work on and come up with a solution other than, you know, get the universities involved, which, you know, at best is going to get more, you know, more students here in five, six years when the need is very, very immediate. So that's my assignment with the consent of the board, that we elevate this to an initiative, and I volunteer myself to help organize this, and would like the support of the rest of the board and other individuals to come forward and assist.
Ms. Bolton?
I think that's a good idea. I would also make sure though that we know that for the last almost three years, it has been a focus of the HR department, and we have expanded our ability and our network. But I think making an initiative is, would be good, and I would, I would, I think that's all right if it needs to, if it's an initiative, we give it to the administration, or do we need any full board discussion? If we don't need any full board discussion, then, I hate to keep saying this, since it's an HR issue, it should go to student achievement. But I think it's elevated itself to a full board initiative and an assignment to the district, and I think that's, that's fine. But I don't want to give the impression they haven't been working on that, because I even saw the results at the career fair or whatever on Saturday. I saw a much larger number of minority folks in those 400 and some people. But HR goes to student achievement, or do we just give this initiative for the administration to bring back a plan?
Yes. I think that probably everybody sitting at this table has a vested interest in this. And I agree with it being initiative, but I would start with assigning to administration to provide us, because I think they're probably already doing some of that work. And so we need to know what it is we're doing currently, and then maybe include it as a full board discussion? So, okay, so include it as a full board discussion, and then we can decide how to move forward with it, rather than one person just trying to do it or the committees. I think it is a subject that I think the full board would want to move. And Erica, Ms. Copeland-Dansby, did you want to respond to-
Yeah, well, I just want to clarify my assignment. I'm fully aware of the efforts of HR, but their efforts are focused on recruitment. That's what they're focused on. I'm talking about development, and development in-house, which is very, very different. So I wanted to clarify what the assignment is.
Okay.
You know, and what we've been talking about in finance is a way to, you know, to support financially the recruitment and, you know, maybe paying for courses.
Mission creep, you're getting mission creep.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, and I would like to discuss this further with the superintendent to clarify, and then we can bring it to the board.
Okay, well, I'm struggling with it being assigned to finance, that's where I'm struggling. And Ms. Copeland-Dansby has her hand up, so Ms. Copeland-Dansby.
I have a hard time seeing that being done in finance as well. I think that we, hopefully, as our urban school district and all of our leadership, are not, what was the word you used, Melanie? Like, who would have thought it, or is amazing, or? No, it's a part of our culture. It is, it has been ingrained in our culture that we don't have minority teachers and leaders in the way that I would like to see us have. So it's not a new phenomenon at all. The work that's been done via HR with intentional steps and measurable outcomes to recruit more heavily in predominantly African-American, you know, schools and other opportunities and that, I think is doing well. I do agree though that the development and the retention of those that we have, coupled with very robust recruitment of minority professionals, is necessary. I don't know that it's an initiative, I think it should be built in, you know, with a real, with a really robust timeline, and it's just, I mean, almost ingrained in the culture. So I don't know how to couple that with what Ms. Bates is asking for.
So I don't know how to couple that with what Ms. Bates is asking for.
My suggestion would be to start with what we know.
Yeah, for sure.
That is, it lies with administration. So we need to, that same question, the way you phrased it, minority development and retention, we, I'm sure we probably, we have information and then bring it to the full board and then maybe we can talk next steps then as to how we proceed. Is it initiative? Is it a full board? You know? So I, that would be what I would recommend. Mr. Morosky?
I'll just add one last thing to this. I think this is an awesome discussion and the reason I think this belongs in student achievement is actually, I think, maybe different than the reason Ms. Copeland-Dansby and Ms. Bolton were saying, and I'm glad that Ms. Bates brought this up, period, so that we can talk about it. The reason I think it belongs in student achievement is until, until our young African-American students feel comfortable in school, they're never going to even think about returning to teach in the schools. And our teachers do an awesome job now and I know there's been some really great stuff done, cultural competency, et cetera, that to build upon, but starting there and then continuing this discussion as we went because this study that Ms. Bates sent was great and it's true and the conversation needs to be had.
Have you seen student achievements work planned for this year?
I have. I am on it with Ms. Bolton and we got a lot to do and we're, and Mr. Timmons, and we're going to do it all.
Yeah. Well, I still think that there are things that we already know. So, you know, I'm pushing hard for administration to provide us information to begin the discussion. That's why I'm sort of avoiding the student achievement assignment. Ms. Bolton?
I agree. And I'm just, again, trying to make sure we're living by the protocol that we have and I think it's great, it is an initiative. I do think it does just go to the administration to begin to, and then they can, as you say, bring it back. I would suggest, especially since we almost heard from Chris Nelmes Jr. tonight, one of the initiatives and one of the thoughts that Chris always had is don't just stress the, as we try to grow our own from our own students, but also from the non-certificated folks like the instructional assistants. He always felt very strongly that we should be looking very carefully at everybody that is a volunteer or a paid coach or group advisor, that you could be growing your own from the coaching staff because so much of the coaching staff, at least in his mind, was that they were coming from the community and that was, they love working with kids and I can testify that part of that's true from my, a number of students that have worked their way into CPS through that avenue. So when the administration reports back, we're not just looking at IAs or our own kids, but look at all these other people and some of these partner organizations too have lots of really wonderful young people in them that probably are in this area, so to speak, but hadn't thought about the teaching piece.
So just to summarize, it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to dig, do a deeper dive into this subject. So what I'm hearing is let's start with administration and then have them present the information to us and then at that point, let's decide which direction we go, whether it be committee or full board or whatever. Is that agreeable?
Yes, and I'd also like to couple that with some of the data that we've collected with development work that you're doing. And I wish I could call the name of those initiatives that you've been working with Mayerson. There's a whole really robust plan.
Great.
And so I think to bring that back around would be beneficial.
Great. Thank you. Other assignments? Anybody have any others? I just wanted to make sure that when we do the notice for the community forum next week, that we make sure to include all of our LSDMCs. I'm pretty sure they probably know at this point that they're coming. Is that right? Okay. So we may not need to do it if they already know, that's fine.
And then we're invited to see you.
Okay, great.
I have an assignment.
Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
I have an assignment other than saying goodnight. I would like to assign to Ms. Worley to put on our website the step-by-step processes or things that we've learned related to FC. I've seen it before where it talks about, I can't see you. Where it talked about having received a letter, I think, January 31 and then we had a board meeting and then we met today and then we're going to meet on 21. I heard one of our speakers say that and I was already thinking that anyway, that that would just help alleviate maybe some of the concern because we heard some people say that we delayed a vote tonight when we were nowhere near voting. So I want the community to be as clear as they possibly can. So I think putting those step, those steps can keep folks informed. And between Mr. Morosky and I and social media, we'll make sure everybody knows.
Any other assignments? Yes?
I think I gave one earlier. Was it the auxiliary piece? So we're good?
Oh, yeah, you did say that.
Thank you.
I missed that. Can you just, okay, I just want to know.
In the, in the treasurer's report, there was 300 and some thousand dollars for auxiliary services, I think it was nurses and whatever, and just suggested to the administration it'd be great to have a listing of those kinds of dollars and to where they're going and how many students are being impacted because people think that all of our total dollars are only going to our 36,000, 35,000 kids.
Okay.
And it gives a wrong reading as to how efficient we are actually being.
Great, thank you.
I have a question related to the assignment that was given when you had to step out with the media related to ACES. Did they, did folks fill you in on the two agenda items?
Two? No, I didn't know the two.
Transportation, I'm giving you this so you can get whatever you have to do. Transportation, specifically the discussion around later start times and a hackathon.
Hackathon?
Hackathon.
Okay.
Number two item, property. It's just a general conversation regarding what is the community benefit process as it would relate to FC, Cincinnati. So-
Ms. Davis, do you have those? Thank you.
I gave you that tonight so we don't have to worry about it in the morning.
Yes, we'll be communicating with city council about these, the final agenda-
Excellent.
-and the date. Okay. Any other assignments? Hearing no other business. Good night and good night. We're adjourned.
Oh, yeah, how, how long has it been sitting there?
Hey, I'm telling you, I'm on it. I was channeling Chris.
And I just clarified.